While they're doing that, I'll have you all know I have the hocus pocus lullaby stuck in my head. Thanks to my children going on day three of ice days and watching Halloween movies. I would sing some if I wasn't completely tone deaf, so it would be in your head too, but we will bypass that.
If you're gonna have anything stuck in your head, though, that's a pretty good one to have, so.
Okay.
Now it's stuck in my head just because I'm thinking about it, so.
All right, I'm now ready to begin, Madam Clerk. We good?
Ready for me to call the roll?
Okay. Well, let me welcome everyone. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, or Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of October 29th, 2020. Rescheduled from October 27th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter? I can see your lips moving, Joe, but I can't hear you, so I'm gonna call you here. Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to item three, approval of the City Council Study Session Minutes of April 21st, 2020. City Council Study Session Minutes of April 21st, 2020. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of July 30th, 2020. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of September 24th, 2020. And City Council Norman Utilities Authority, or Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of October 13th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter? I'm going to try to. Oh, I can hear you now. Okay. Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item four, Proclamation 2021-6 proclaiming Wednesday, October 28th, 2020 as Immigrants Day. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter? Okay, it's still not working. Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The proclamation is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, as Immigrants Day in the City of Norman, whereas October 28th is dedicated to the annual observance of National Immigrants Day. And whereas since the European discovery of America, pilgrims have traveled to this country in hopes of escaping poverty and persecution they faced in their own countries. And whereas on January 1st, 1892, Ellis Island officially began processing immigrants into this country. And whereas in 1897, Congress formally recognized the first National Immigrants Day. And whereas the Immigration Act of 1990 was passed to grant temporary protective status to immigrants in need. And whereas immigrants of all backgrounds have come together and helped shape our country, state, and city into the strong eclectic communities they are today. And whereas the ideas, talents, hard work, and perseverance of immigrants continue to contribute to the diversity, vibrancy, and strength of our community. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 28th, 2020, as Immigrants Day in the City of Norman, Oklahoma, and encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity, strength, and vibrancy of our community. I will add that the Americas weren't discovered. There were people here. But it did lead to massive amounts of immigration, and I've traced my roots back. I come from England and Scotland, and so I'm glad that we are recognizing this. And I hope that Norman will always be a welcoming place to immigrants because of all of the wonderful diversity, but also strength to our workforce that they bring to our city, state, and nation. On to item five, the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 24 on the consent docket.
Motion. Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items six through 24 on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
My apologies. Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item six, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of August 31st, 2020. Item seven, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of September 30th, 2020. Item eight, submission of the monthly departmental report for the month of September, 2020. Item nine, bid 2021-10, contract 2021-9 with RDNJ LLC doing business as a tech paving in the amount of $915,412.41 for the Interstate Drive Reconstruction Project location located on East Interstate Drive from Main Street to Robinson Street. Acceptance of Bond and Adoption of Tax Exempt Status Resolution. Item 10, bid 2021-28, contract 2021-53 with Rudy Construction Company in the amount of $2,609,996.65 for the Porter and Acres Intersection 2019 Bond Project with Performance Bond 2021-46, Statutory Bond 2021-47, and Maintenance Bond 2021-32, and Resolution 2021-50, and Transfer of Project Funds. Item 11, bid 2021-30 for the purchase of aggregate and stone for the street and stormwater divisions. Item 12, amendment to easement 2021-3, amending easement 2021-3 granted to Hidalgo Trading LLC for use of a cellphone tower located at 333 Bratcher Minor Road. The following easements are for the 36th Avenue Northwest Widening Project from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. Item 13, 2021-32, in the amount of $14,065 from Donald Wayne and Kathy Elaine Ross. Item 14, 2021-33, in the amount of $19,550 from Scott and Lisa Jackson. Item 15, 2021-34, in the amount of $19,655 from Noel Dixon and Imogene Sudaf. Item 16, 2021-35, in the amount. Okay, that looks like, nope, in the amount of $19,715 from Noel Dixon and Imogene Sudaf. Item 17, receipt of the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Waterline Permit, WL000014200507 dated September 3rd, 2020, for the 2015 Waterwell Lines Project Phase Two, located near Franklin Road and 60th Avenue Northeast. Item 18, acceptance of a 2020 Community Hope Centers grant in the amount of $237,329 from the Oklahoma Department of Human Services to be used by the Parks and Recreation Department for the coordination of childcare. That includes childcare, virtual learning, counseling services, and daily meals at no cost to residents related to those affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Contract 2021-64 and budget appropriation from the special grants fund balance. Item 19, authorization for expenditure number six under contract 1314-102 with Smith Roberts Land Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $9,380 to provide right-of-way acquisition services under an on-call contract for the Porter-Akers Intersection Project. Item 20, changer number one to contract 2021-5 with Nash Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $118,699.50 for a revised contract amount of $728,325.50 to add Iowa Street between Pickard Avenue and Flood Avenue to the project, and adding 34 calendar days for the Pickard Avenue Reconstruction Project from Kansas Street to Acre Street. Item 21, contract 2021-62, a lease agreement with Shelter Investments LLC for a monthly rental fee of $5,500 per month for the lease of real property located at 325 East Comanche Street to be used as a winter warming shelter from November 2020 until March 2021 and budget appropriation. Item 22, contract 2021-63 with Elite Security Protection Services to provide private security services for the winter warming located at 325 East Comanche Street from November 2020 through March 2021 and budget appropriation. Item 23, Resolution 2021-60 appropriating $18,953.33 from the refunds, reimbursements, miscellaneous risk management account received from insurance companies to repair and replace damaged traffic signal equipment or traffic signs damaged in traffic collisions. Item 24, Resolution 2021-62 authorizing joint petition settlement in the amount of $27,500 for Edward McGrane in Workers' Compensation Case 2018-03311J. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any items on the consent docket?
I haven't seen them there. I'm sorry. Somebody was trying to.
Me too, and I see hands move. I just wait for it. So no worries, no worries. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Holman wanted to make a comment.
Even once, yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't crazy seeing his arm move. Councilmember Holman?
Okay, I did have some questions about item 21. Go over a minute for everyone watching, and I did have one question about it too. The year-long lease and using it for storage for most of the months, the cost of that lease to use it for storage space is one concern I've really heard from some folks, more so than it being used for this purpose, for warming shelter, but the cost of using it as a storage space afterwards. So I was kind of wondering if we know how much, how much do we spend currently on storage space? What would be, what would we be looking at paying for storage space if we were to store that stuff somewhere else? That type of stuff is kind of the questions I had, but I would like to just hear kind of from staff about this agreement and what we're gonna be doing here for those watching. Thank you.
Certainly. When we began investigating the use of this site, one of the things, in addition to the storage, is that we are gonna be utilizing the area as a place to meet and have small case management meetings between the outreach workers and the clients. As you know, office, office areas here are at a, at a great demand, and you know, we're very adamant that, that the use of the shelter will not continue past March. The landlord suggested a year-long lease, you know, and so we, that was just kind of what we were, we were working with. That, you know, yes, we can store things in there, but it won't just be used for storage. It won't be, there will be some case management meetings and things that will go on there during the days.
And Councilmember Holman, one of the conversations we did have based on the council's desire to explore the acquisition at 718 North Porter as this facility would be available to us until acquisition and some minor renovations do take place at 718, and then this use would transfer over to that 718 North Porter address, and we would vacate this facility. So we, we do feel like it will get us through the time right now where we're in desperate need of some space to provide this use for us and provide us enough flexibility in that schedule to do the renovations necessary at 718 to provide this service in October, November of 2021.
Appreciate it.
As, as we were working with this property, we were not, the time for the 718 property was not, was not known at that time. We had a very, very difficult time trying to locate a, a facility for this use. And so by doing the year lease with an option for a second year, we felt that that would give us a little bit of a head start towards next year. If 718 doesn't pan out or, or whatever, then we're, we're that much further ahead next year.
And just to be clear, staff did spend a considerable amount of time looking for a space to do this, and this option on Comanche was really all that was available right now, anywhere near this area, from what I understand.
Yeah, it was, we, we had one other location, but it really was not, the facility was, was desirable, but the location was not.
And from my understanding, that was pretty, maybe on the very far side of north, the north side of the city.
Yes.
I appreciate that. I, I did see a post today from Mayor Holt in OKC about them using the Cox Center, the myriad, whatever folks might remember it as, as a warming shelter, and they're using embark buses to get people there that need it. And I thought that could be something we looked at in the future too, if, if we didn't have this option was, you know, our rec centers, or if, oh, you would let us use the field house, anything like that in the future. If, if the North Porter option falls through or other things like that, I thought that was a pretty good use of, that OKC came up with of the old Cox Center. So I appreciate answering those questions. Like I said, that's a few that I have received from Ward Seven resident or two. So I appreciate the answers, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I was gonna save my comments for later, but I think they might be more appropriate right now because this is, there has been a lot of comments about the warming shelter, and I have attended most of the ad hoc homeless meetings, homelessness meetings for the past year, and was able to watch firsthand the success that we had last year with the warming shelter. That was the former library building, and I'm hearing some of the very same concerns that we heard about this time last year. And I just think it's important to take an opportunity to reassure the businesses around this location and all of the things that were done last year to mitigate those concerns. And those same kinds of things will be put into place this year. So part of this item is also a contract for security, which people have been wondering about. So there will be security on premises from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And at that point, the warming shelter will be closed for the day until reopening the following evening at 7:00 PM. There also are capacity limits, and everyone is very COVID-conscious to make sure that we're providing a safe place and providing a safe place for our overnight residents as well as the staff and the security that'll be there. So that was another concern that was expressed. There also will definitely be a line of communication open with our homelessness coordinator and Lieutenant Carrie Bryant with the surrounding businesses to make sure that there's a channel of communication open and available to them at all times to address any concerns that we have. But I just feel like it was important to make sure that the public knew that we successfully operated a shelter last year with very little issues and provided a lot of hope and temporary housing for people and a warm place to stay. And I expect us to have continued success this year and improve on what we were able to do from everything that we learned last year. So I'm definitely in support of this and expect it to be successful just as it was last year. And as always, we have staff and council members available to address any concerns that any local businesses may have or anyone in the public.
Councilmember Hall, you're right on point. In our experience in the winter of 2019, early 2020, we can now speak from experience and recognize that the timing of the operation of the warming shelter, it, it, they were wonderful neighbors. The, the valuable opportunity to meet with members of our homeless community during the intake process was absolutely priceless in helping several members of our homeless population clear some small hurdles and obtain permanent supportive housing. We would not be as confident in citing such an operation had we not had them on the City Hall complex last winter. And it was absolutely a non-issue from every respect. The place stayed clean. We, we didn't experience any vandalism, anything. It was really just a great experience for staff to witness also. We will be standing by. We have great staff in Mrs. Michelle Evans and Mrs. Lisa Craig and Lieutenant Carrie Bryant. We've got a great security program lined up with experience from prior years. We have high confidence in security that will be stationed at the facility the entire time it is occupied, and confidence is high. We will be very successful. Also wanted to share the efforts of our team in securing grant funding to pay for the lion's share of the services that will be provided this time. Last year, when we found ourselves in a relatively short window, we sprung into action and were able to reprogram some previously appropriated general fund dollars to provide this service. And this time around, most of the activities will be grant-funded. So kudos to Lisa and Michelle for their dedication to the effort.
I also just thought I would add that I would be happy to connect current business owners that may be in the local vicinity to business owners that were in the warming shelter vicinity, vicinity last year because I think having that line of communication also open can allay any, any concerns that, that they may still have.
Councilmember Patron?
Thank you. I too had a resident who asked a couple of questions about, about this facility. The first question was, why was the lease with Shelter Investments instead of with the city? Can anybody?
Can you repeat your question, Allison? I don't know if they heard.
Yeah, so one of the, I too had a couple of questions from a resident in particular. And the first question was, why is the lease structured between Shelter Investments and not the city?
It is between Shelter Investments and the city. Shelter Investments is the landlord.
Shelter Investments is the?
The property owner.
Property owner, so they formed an LLC for this purpose?
I, I don't know. I don't know if that's what it was called before or not, but that's the party to the lease.
So it's not the chamber, I mean, not the continuum of care. It's the landlord. Okay? And then the second question they had was, why was rezoning not required and official notice not given to the business owners in the area? So this is considered the temporary use? And historically, when we've had temporary uses, we don't take those zonings, rezoning requests forward, no different than what we did in the library last year, the temporary use. Okay, that's, I'm actually, I just wanted to make sure that the questions were answered for them. I think that this is a very unique situation that we're facing with a pandemic as well. And the reason why that, those additional dollars that the city manager just spoke about to fund the remainder of the costs associated with this is because it is meant to curb the spread of COVID amongst this population. And so I'm actually very proud of our staff for finding a facility or a building that could be used in the interim for this purpose to keep all, keep our residents safe, both our business owners and our homeless population. And so I commend staff. We just had a major ice storm, and my thoughts were wondering how our homeless population had weathered such a horrendous event. So thank you, staff, for finding the dollars to allocate in a safe way to protect our people.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, so a lot of my questions and comments have kind of already been addressed, but I did have one along the lines of public education. Could somebody speak to the, the infection prevention strategies that will be in place at the shelter?
Yes. Hello, Councilmember Peacock. The precautions we are taking for the shelter, we are following CDC guidelines and HUD guidelines strictly. So maintaining the six feet spacing between cots upon entry, temperature will be taken, and they'll also be mandated to wear masks. And if someone in handwashing sanitizer, everyone will be mandated to do that. If someone does present with any symptoms, we also have a process in place to get that person safely isolated. So with all of those steps in place, we feel very confident that everything will be followed and that everyone will be, remain safe as possible, and staff included.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, that addresses a lot of my concerns. Has there been any kind of partnership with Emmy or anybody explored, just for, maybe some onsite rapid testing?
Not at this moment, but we also have someone from the Norman Regional Hospital. She is on the COC board. She's a wonderful member, so she's also going to be there. So we are just finalizing that process with her. She will also be present to do flu shots as well. So we are really gonna try and make sure to iron out that plan as well with Emmy.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Foreman?
Okay, I had a couple of questions from constituents that I just thought I would ask on their behalf. Was there no city property anywhere available for this? A lot of people are having concerns that it's a commercial property. Did we not have anywhere we, we could host this?
That is a great question. Councilmember Foreman, staff, we actually did review every city facility. We looked at existing programming that is already scheduled to take place in some of these properties until as late as 10:00 PM, which is, you know, a little late in the evening for us to be checking folks in, especially when the weather turns to full-speed-ahead winter. The former Central Library demolition is, is set to begin here in the next couple of weeks. So the space that we used last season will be under construction long before the need for the space is over. And we, the only, I mean, we didn't have a, a piece of real estate. We looked at even the Chase Bank Building on Porter just south of this piece of property to see if it could, if it could help. Having closed escrow yet and didn't have anywhere near enough square footage to make that work. But yes, staff did evaluate all of the city facilities to see if we could accommodate on city property, and we're not able to do so.
With Griffin and stuff, a lot of that's empty. Have we tried to communicate with the state to use any of that?
We did, and they were in transition in leadership in the Department of Behavioral Health, and their facilities are either occupied and in use or uninhabitable based on their current condition. It does sound like with their recent appointment to a permanent director of Behavioral Health for the state, I think they have a brand-new outlook on how they will address their real property holdings going forward, but they didn't have a habitable location available to us.
And then one last question that was asked, if property owners, neighboring business owners, if they start getting break-ins or thefts or something, would the city terminate the contract and move elsewhere? What, how would we handle situation, like if it became, for some reason, an issue?
We, well, two things. One, we do have a great contract with our security provider, and we would look to initially enhance that contract. And we would also increase patrols in the neighborhood from our late night. And we would also increase patrols in the neighborhood from our late night shift in the police department to make sure that type of loitering and activity was not taking place. So we'll have a couple of fronts to address any such uptick in unsavory activities.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Carter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that I had a business owner that I believe is adjacent to this facility, reach out to me today that they are fully supportive of this. And so this, the rumor mill gets going that all the businesses in the area are against it was definitely not true. Thank you.
And Councilmember Holman.
Just add to that, that I've personally only heard from one business owner in all of down against it. For whatever reason, that's the only person that decided to contact me. I would, so I'd agree with Councilmember Carter about the characterization of what's going on. One question I did have from some folks was the limit of 35 folks. What would happen if we do have to turn someone away that otherwise would be allowed to come in? What plans we might have in place for that? Thank you.
That's a great question. And just like last year, we never met full capacity. This year now with only 35 bed space as compared to what, close to 50 last year. If we do reach capacity and we still have individuals wanting to shelter in, we have hotel motel vouchers for those individuals and we have a process with our agencies who handle those. And, you know, we're going to take that on a night to night basis. We really will. Like I said, we, we reached capacity almost like maybe four nights all last year during the three month duration. So we're going to really just assess that daily. And if we see that we're creeping up closely, then we absolutely have that plan in action. If I may, I would like to mention also, once check-in takes place, these individuals are there for the night and there will be no loitering outside. The security guards are there to oversee that. There will be a camera put up out back. We really did think of every safety feature we can and keeping in mind the businesses in that area. So that will be very closely monitored because once they're checked in for the night, they're in. There's, there's no in and out.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hall.
I'd also like to add one more thing. I've gotten several comments from business owners that are in support, but one concern that they had that I think we really might be able to address easily, especially right now when we have so many OG&E trucks in the area. One of the questions that, that was brought up is alleyway safety. And they pointed out that the lights in the alleyway are all currently out. And this was, I think, before the ice storm. And so I guess there have been inquiries made to OG&E to fix those lights. So perhaps we could help and facilitate with that and get that taken care of as long as we're going to be operating the shelter, because that's something the business owners have tried to solve for themselves. And I think they need a little help making sure that gets done. So hopefully we can take care of that, too.
Councilmember Hall, thanks for sharing that. I was unaware that that was an outstanding issue. I will address that with our OG&E representative first thing in the morning. And I do agree that alley safety, especially as busy as the roadways have been, going to be paramount before the weather turns bad. So we'll get right on that. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thank you very much. I felt like that was something that we could probably facilitate. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
Just real quick, was the 12th Street Rec Center ever considered for the place, the facility?
Councilmember Foreman, we did review all of those facilities. We had scheduled programmed events up until at least 10:00 PM. And by the time everybody clears out, it's 10:30 at night. And we usually have people checked in and, and getting cozy for the evening long before 10:30. So that's why it, it, we didn't move forward with that recommendation.
Okay.
I'm seeing no other questions, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for all those great questions and lots of important information there. So the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Consent docket is approved unanimously.
All right. Now to off consent. Item 25, Resolution 2021-63, CARES Act reimbursement funding in the amount of $6,525,000 received from the state of Oklahoma from the general fund miscellaneous grant reimbursements account to be used for identified high priority projects. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Anthony Francisco, our Director of Finance, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I hope that my shared screen is showing up for everyone, is it?
It is.
This is just a brief presentation that summarizes what is in the council's packet. And what is in the council's packet is really just a summary of what council has been talking about for the last several months. We were informed in the summer, approximately in August, that the state of Oklahoma had changed some guidelines under which the CARES Act funding would be appropriated and given out by the, by the state and given to the cities to reimburse expenses that the various cities had made for COVID-related expenses. And the, and the guidelines would basically distribute the money based on the population of each of the individual cities. So under that formula, Norman is appropriated about $9.6 million. And under the guidelines, the reimbursements are for very broad expenditures. And once the reimbursements have been made, then the cost that had previously incurred, the funds are discretionary to be appropriated by the governing body, in this case, our city council. So since that time in August, the council has discussed at various committee meetings and finally at your retreat on the 16th of October, how you might appropriate those funds. And you directed staff to prepare this appropriation item for about $4.8 million for the Senior Citizens Wellness Center, $575,000 to visit Norman and $500,000 to the Norman Arts Council to kind of make up for lost room tax revenue so that they could bring those programs that they are contracted to do back to the levels that had been hoped for when the budget was adopted. There's also about $600,000 in total of that $9.6 million. That will be back into the city's general fund and the city's rainy day fund to bring the rainy day fund up to its targeted level. And then the council talked about, about $50,000 for frontline providers, nurses and, and those folks that have been dealing with the COVID crisis upfront in some sort of program for them. So following all of those guidelines the council has directed, we'd be spending about $6,525, about, I'm sorry. Yeah, about $6,525,000 of the $9.6 million that will be available under that CARES Act distribution from the state of Oklahoma. And about $3,75,000 would be remaining after tonight's proposed action. And I'll be glad to respond to any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco. I tried to get as many of our, our questions to you all ahead of time, so we could have all of the information we need. I know this is hopefully a once in a lifetime experience that we have in distributing these funds and the list of needs of our community as well. So we did discuss this at the retreat and I will, I'm looking through the scroll here, but Madam Clerk, if there are any questions or comments, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, Councilmember Foreman.
I would actually like to make a motion to postpone this vote tonight. It's actually a very contentious issue for my ward. A lot of people have reached out to me very concerned about it. You know, they sort of feel like we did it under, you know, the guise of night. It was at our council retreat, which is technically a public meeting, but it's not, not so public. A lot of small business owners would like the opportunity to kind of make their pitches to city council on how to appropriate the funds for small businesses. And given the storm that we just had, and I think some of our priorities might have changed. And so I don't know how you formally do this. I've never done this, but I would like to make a motion to postpone this until we can have further public discussion on appropriating the funds.
I'm not, I'm not hearing a second.
Second.
Okay, so now the motion has been made and seconded to postpone. We really need a date certain. So did you have a date in mind, Councilmember Foreman?
Just the next council meeting. I think that should give people sufficient amount of time that we can inform them so they can make up the comment.
But that would be November the 10th?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to postpone the item until November the 10th. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this? Councilmember Petron?
It's just to the postponement.
Correct. I have a question of whether or not this, if, it's my understanding that the money for the warming shelter is also part of the 465 allocation, is that correct?
Your Honor, there, if there are any additional expenses that come in at the end of the program, we do have extra security scheduled that may exceed our grant amount. So we may utilize some of the $465,000 that is listed in the appropriation under the city manager's budget. And there was a question, is it related to, what is the $465,000 for? Mr. Francisco can literally place that in any departmental budget council sees most appropriate. But that is the place from which we will pay all the bills and reimburse the city's accounts for all of the PPE we've already purchased and all of the contract cleaning, et cetera. So it's not imperative that the 465 be appropriated tonight to allow us to advance the warming center lease agreement. We're in good shape for a month on that, no problem with funds on hand.
That was my question.
Councilmember Holman.
So I generally am fine with postponing things to get more into the discussion, that's for sure. I do have a couple of questions, though. I would note, I've only tallied one Ward 7 resident that's contacted me against this action. Around, over 10 have contacted me or I've noted that are in favor. Understandably, different wards can have different reactions, of course. That would be, my question would be about, yeah, the sensitivity, time sensitivity for any of this, if it needs to be done now. I know we've been getting emails for weeks from people advocating that we allocate funding to them, organizations all across the city. And we do still have over $3 million left over after this, if it were to be approved. That I've been under the impression would be, we would be planning to use that to help out small businesses, but the process by which to allocate those funds to businesses that need it is not ready to go tonight. So if we, desired by council is to postpone the whole thing so we can get it all done at once, I wouldn't be opposed to that unless there's a good reason that we need to get this section through tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter.
Can you hear me? Well, we've had a, a, we had a very lively dialogue and discussion of this in the Ward 2 Ward meeting on Monday night. Thank you again, Mr. Pile, for coming. So I do feel like it's been discussed and discussed and discussed in Ward 2. And there are, the overwhelming number of Ward 2 residents are for this action. And so I'd say our, our seniors deserve us to move forward and we need to do it.
Councilmember Nash.
So I've received an overwhelming number of messages, emails, calls from people who feel like this is just fun by night, slipped under the radar, slipped into the consent docket without any kind of discussion. There's a lot of misunderstanding out there about what, you know, the nature of these funds. And I think if there's no, there's no time sensitive aspect to this, this item, it would make the, the public feel a lot more comfortable with us giving it a week, two weeks to discuss it so that they're aware that the discussion is going to take place, can get fully informed about what the, the funds are from and what they're for, how this is not misappropriation of the funding. I mean, if anything that we can do to, to help the public feel more comfortable with where their, their city government's money is going, and it just makes sense to me. I don't see why we wouldn't pursue an opportunity to, to enhance the transparency with, with the government.
We see no other comments, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I'll chime in with, I'm ready to move forward. This was discussed two weeks ago. It was a public meeting. We do need to take action on this. There, as I mentioned at the beginning, a very long list of needs. Did have a discussion about it. I don't know what else we would do besides rearrange everything we've already decided upon. So there, there, I know there are concerns on making sure our businesses are supported as Mr. Francisco covered. We still have over $3 million left to distribute, so there will be continued discussions about that, which I think is, is worth noting. But I'm, I'm ready to do some good in our community, so I will not be supporting the postponing tonight. So with that, do we need to take public comment on the motion to postpone?
There's no one here in the public. Let me check my. I've got some emails. Let me run through right quick. From Jim Jenkins, I urge the city council to approve reimbursement funds for the senior center. We've waited too long and heard so many broken promises. The council has the opportunity to show the citizens of Norman that seniors are a priority, not bargaining chips. Okay.
And Mr. Pile, while Madam Clerk is looking at that, could you clarify what the $50,000 for the healthcare professionals will be spent on? I believe some decisions have been made on that, and I know that was a question we got a fair amount.
Madam Mayor, well, I did initiate a conversation with Mr. Split in terms of a mechanism to provide that support and care for those first responder healthcare frontline workers and potentially result in some economic stimulus in Norman with a program whereby pre-numbered gift certificates would be printed in increments of 100. in increments of $100 that the Norman Regional Board and administration would provide to their frontline healthcare workers to be redeemed in Norman businesses, ultimately redeemed to the city of Norman, to be covered financially. So, you could utilize somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000, depending on the number of frontline workers that would be supported in that capacity. Mr. Split did have experience with a program like that in Oklahoma City. We'd be working closely with our business merchants, restaurants, and retailers to take advantage of a program like that, should it become available.
Okay, back to me. I have a comment from Marian Nunez. "Is there any plan to offer coronavirus relief grants to small businesses anytime soon?" I think the mayor probably answered that question. And then, the last comment is, or actually have two more. Please, from Mark Campbell, "Please appropriate CARES Act funding to complete the gap in the funding necessary to complete the senior center tonight." And... Another from Braden Hartcell, Ward 1 resident. "I support postponement. I'm wondering why 4.8 million is going to the senior center when there are hundreds, if not thousands, of Norman citizens who are still going through a hard time because of COVID." The next one from Erin Gavigan. "Arts organizations have been without funding for four months already. We are losing these programs by the minute. Don't postpone." Cindy Rogers asking, "Was there public comment at the meeting that Mayor Clark mentioned?" And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding the motion to postpone?
Councilmember Hall?
I think this may have something to do with postponement. You can stop me if it doesn't, because I know one of the concerns that has been raised that I think we could also clarify is, oh, why we haven't appropriated funding for rental assistance. And I know we have a program in place, and I see that Ms. Craig is on the call, so she might be able to clarify that, too, if that's appropriate at this time.
Yes, the city of Norman received CARES funds through the CDBG program. Earlier this spring, we have an ongoing program for written utility assistance that is still funded and operating. We have plenty of funds left, and they're processing applications daily.
Councilmember Petron?
Okay, so, all along in the last three months, I have gotten from residents about the Norman Arts Council. So, I do feel like that that is something that is extremely important for us to answer tonight. I'm not sure that every single one of these are something. I mean, I have questions about some of them. But, the senior center I'm comfortable with, that is a wellness center, and this is meant to be able to have a community outreach place for our seniors, our most vulnerable people, some of the most vulnerable people in our community. So, with having that opportunity in front of us, to be able to reach out to them and give some hope to this community, that this council had an opportunity to finally need the council to fully fund it. I'm not going to support postponing tonight on that. That said, I do have questions myself over Visit Norman. I'm not sure that it makes, I have more questions about that. So, when it comes back around, if this is not postponed, or even if it is postponed, about whether or not that is a high-priority item for today's climate. So, and how many employees that might be with Visit Norman compared to what we're hearing about members of our community or who are needing help. So, I'm not going to be supporting the postponement, but I understand Councilmember Foreman's concerns. And I'm encouraged that there is still another $3 million to be able to continue allocating throughout the community in places of need. So, if anything, I would hope that we could have a public meeting between now and the 10th regarding the next $3 million, instead of stopping the train entirely. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember Bierman?
So, I've kind of been going back and forth with myself about the postponement for a lot of the reasons that have already been stated. I understand and respect where Councilmember Foreman is coming from. And frankly, if I hadn't been as slow on my unmute button, I would have seconded her, I would have seconded her motion, because I think it's important that we have this discussion. There are things that I really, really like about what we're spending this money on, including the senior center. And there are some things that I'm not super thrilled about, but that is the nature of negotiation and compromise. I didn't get everything that I want, and I'm sure that everyone else on council feels the same. I do feel that we need to have a substantive conversation about what to do with the last $3 million, because I do think that there are needs left on the table, unaddressed. And maybe the ways we've thought about using it are not the best ways to use it, and maybe they are. But, I do think that we need to have that conversation in a more public setting than our council retreat. All that to say, I will not be supporting the postponement tonight, but if it is successful, I look forward to that substantive conversation, and I hope that we have that conversation regardless for the $3 million that remains.
Councilmember Carter? Yes. Okay, kind of scratchy now.
It sounds a little bit like the principal in Peanuts, a little wah-wah-wah.
Let's, let's try it. Make your comments, and we'll see what you think.
No.
Okay, well, there's a lot, there's a lot of economic stimulus in this. The infrastructure expenditures on the senior center will directly inject money into our community. I have firsthand knowledge of the importance of why this money needs to start moving now and tomorrow. If we would have had some kind of economic package, or would have had more business in the last 30 days, it would have been able to put off for maybe another couple of weeks, or for another month. So, this money will, just like Mr. Powell said, will inject money into businesses now. It'll inject money into Visit Norman that will use to create business now. It'll inject money into the art community and nonprofits in Norman that will be used in Norman now. And then, and then, as Jim Jenkins said, our seniors have been heralded captives, and if no one else deserves our support right now, it's them. And I wholeheartedly think we should move forward with not postponing.
Okay, Councilmember Peacock?
I did have one quick question, real quick. If this were to move forward, and before any funds were expended for the senior center, would it be possible to get a written opinion from a state auditor that basically certifies that we are, in fact, using these funds for legal use, and that it's not anything that we're going to get hung up for in the future?
Councilmember Peacock, what, what may be, and I'm glad Mr. Francisco is with us. We are being independently audited as we speak. Our auditors are in the office this week, getting ready to prepare our audited financial statements for council's review in November. One of the processes that we go through annually is referred to as the single audit, because we are recipients of federal dollars directly. So, we can look at it to see if the most appropriate opinion is actually from our independent audit firm, you know, as they look at it through the single audit lens, or if it is from somebody from the state of Oklahoma. Mr. Francisco, I really value your opinion on this matter.
What the city manager is saying is correct. Our external auditors have already been looking at how we have used all of the CARES grant funds that we have already received or have contracted for. And again, the, the thing that is audited is, are you in compliance with the guidelines? Are the contracts for the grant funded, whether they be from the federal government or from the state government, or whomever? And they have certainly done some preliminary analysis of these funds, not just for Norman, but again, they are the auditors for Tulsa and some other cities who are receiving very similar grant funds. They are very aware of, of how the funds are to be used in each of the cities that they are auditing. And that they have certainly given us no indication that, that we're not in compliance with all of the guidelines, so.
And would it be possible to get any of that in kind of a written documentation form? Just something that gives us, you know, I'd really hate to move forward with this and find out six months down the road that we, we were incorrect. I know you guys have done all your due diligence. You know, I just really would like to make sure all the bases are covered.
Only at the point that the council receives the single audit. Auditors are not really good about giving, you know, a letter requirement about some single grant, but, but they're looking at the grants in general. But, we can certainly ask for that. But, my, my experience has been that that would be part of the single audit and that council will receive in December or January.
And that's why I was asking if it goes straight, you know, kind of the highest power of the state auditor, and really just get that final determinate ruling. It seems that this is probably a common issue across several cities, and I'm sure they're, they pretty have a formed opinion already, ready to go. So, if that's attainable, I would love to see that before any funds are spent.
Councilmember Foreman?
I'm just wanting to clarify that a postponement is not a disagreement with the stuff that we already talked about. I have mentioned in this council numerous times that the city will continue to hold us hostage, not add anything until we build the senior center. That's a very top priority for me. But, what's an even bigger priority for me is rebuilding trust with the city. And they're simply asking that we be very transparent. I like to think that I'm a smart gal, but I don't know everything, and we don't know everything. And there might be different things, I mean, we might want to consider or prioritize differently, and they just want a little bit of time. And so, for me, making this motion to postpone is throwing a bone, trying to rebuild that trust and transparency. I don't think that's too much to ask. So, I am definitely going to support my motion, so thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
So, I appreciate Councilmember Foreman and her sensitivity to her constituents, as we all are. I've gotten quite a bit of feedback before the retreat and following the retreat from a variety of constituents in Ward 4. And there is absolutely overwhelming support for the senior center, which I think we're all aware. And also, overwhelming support for making up lost revenue for the hotel motel tax for our organizations that depend on that. And overwhelming support for our arts community and the thread that they're hanging on by right now. I also do think that we had a pretty lively conversation at our council retreat to try to achieve consensus with the things that are presented, denied. And as Councilmember Bierman pointed out, there are some things that we have as a higher priority for some of us than other things. And, but I do think we were successful at reaching consensus with this piece of the pie, and we still have $3 million left. So, I do believe we have an opportunity for a robust community discussion in the next couple of weeks, as we decide what to do with the other $3 million. But, I know that we've got a lot of agencies and organizations that are really depending on getting some help, and as help as soon as we can. So, as much as I respect your reasoning for wanting to postpone, I, I think we need to move forward tonight, and so I'll have to vote against it.
Seeing no other council comments, Mayor?
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to postpone this CARES Act funding resolution to the next council meeting on November 10th. Councilmembers, or, we said you may cast your vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
No.
Councilmember Carter?
No.
Councilwoman Petron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peacock?
No.
Mayor Clark?
No.
The motion to postpone fails by a vote of 6 to 3, voting in favor. Councilmember Nash, Councilwoman Foreman, Councilmember Holman.
Thank you.
Now, you're back to them.
To questions, I believe, from the council regarding the original motion, is that correct?
Yes. And Councilmember Holman has his hand raised.
Thank you. So, I did have some questions before we went through the postpone motion. So, and like I mentioned before, I generally like to err on the side of allowing more time to discuss if that's needed, if it's what council wants. But, I think, I think everyone was right in way tonight. So, anyway, we're past that point, and I do have some questions, which were kind of answered in the previous discussion. But, really, what I was going to kind of focus on, similar to Councilperson Peacock and others, was the, just clarification about the use of these funds for the senior center. In my opinion, it is a health and wellness service, and it will have a significant impact positively to the local economy when it comes to hiring people to build it, equipment, rental, construction, materials, all that stuff should be a pretty good thing, as large infrastructure projects historically have proven to be a good thing, not just in Norman, but the whole United States, really. So, but that's kind of, I really do want to make sure that that is what we're doing. I don't know if it's a legal opinion from somebody, or if it's the auditors, but I do believe this is an appropriate use. But, I agree, I don't want to find ourselves in a situation a few months ago where we think we've finally got this thing done, and then we run into another hiccup there. So, before we expend money, any kind of documented support clarification we can get, I think, would be helpful on that particular piece. I do want to get some clarification, too, about the reimbursement part. What is being reimbursed? What money we've spent that is being reimbursed versus what part of this is not reimbursed? And I think there, we've seen some confusion about that particular thing online. So, I think some clarity on that, that all the money isn't or is reimbursed. A lot of folks seem to be confused about that. That would be my questions about that part. I do have some questions about Visit Norman as well. I think Dan Shim, the director, is, is with us, or will be with us, to answer some questions about that, too. I think understandably, folks have some questions about the effectiveness of tourism right now and the safety of inviting more people to come to Norman from other places and spend money, which we want. But, is it the safe thing to do? I think that's a pretty valid question that most people would have. So, maybe, we can get to that with Dan, but maybe some clarification on the reimbursement versus not reimbursement part would be helpful. Thank you.
Basically, that is what was the guidelines that were changed by the state of Oklahoma, is the definition of what could qualify as reimbursable funds. And basically, the guidelines were broadened such that cities and counties could use reimbursable funds basically for... And basically, the guidelines were broadened such that cities and counties could use reimbursable funds basically for any public safety related expenses, any frontline related expenses where folks are serving the public or providing public safety services to the public. Those funds qualify. And so we were able to, under those expanded guidelines, easily submit to the state expenditures that the city had already made. Under those guidelines, that came up to the $9.6 million. And that's how we got to that number.
Okay. And the, the money to the general fund, that is a reimbursement of money that the city has had to expend due to COVID-related equipment, whatever it may be. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I did see one comment from someone online about they were in the impression that the city had been donated PPE, which we were. But it was to give out to citizens and businesses for free. And it wasn't really for city staff. I mean, city staff could have used them, I guess. But it wasn't for, that donation that we accepted was not for covering the entire city's needs. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct. Oh, and Mr. Francisco, we did track down that information with the assistance of our fire chief Travis King. In that somebody had asked a question that they believed we had retained 20,000 of those donated masks for cities' consumption. And actually, we purchased masks early on when the chief was able to find a supplier. And the masks purchased for our first responders are identified as KN95 masks. And they're incredibly heavy duty, and that's the kind of mask that all the first responders use. The donated masks were surgical masks, and those are not used by our first responders at all. We went through all one, well, and I'll say nearly all 100,000 masks. Within about two weeks, we retained about 1,000 masks at City Hall to share with visitors who were coming and going, who did not bring masks initially. And we had several businesses come directly to City Hall and pick up masks between 100 and 500 at a time. So there may be a box or two of those masks left anywhere at City Hall. But we went through the lion's share of that entire donation, which was a very generous gesture on the part of one of our local business owners. And what you'll find in inventory are those KN95 masks that the first responders used. Those were purchased with city dollars and submitted for reimbursement, and they're included in the CARES Act money we are eligible to receive.
Thank you. And the rainy day portion, would you ever touch on that again, real quick about why we're using this to put towards the rainy day portion?
Again, that is part of the discussion the council had had previously, just bringing the rainy day fund up to its targeted level. And this was a source of funds to do that.
Okay. And then.
Mr. Francisco, was that the area from which we drew down for the July storm debris removal?
No, we have not.
We haven't even finished up all the bills for that yet.
Yeah, this is not the 1% emergency allocation in the general fund. This is the rainy day fund, fund number 11. So it's a separate fund. Council reviews whether it should be at its minimum level or its targeted level. And the discussion was because it is short of its targeted level, bringing it up to that targeted level.
Then just to clarify further, the remaining funds, the 3.75 million that's left over. Or yeah, $3,075,000 that's left over. The council has discretion, we can use that to, if we wanted to come up with, if we wanted to have a grant program for small businesses, people that have been impacted. Would we be able to help? Do we know, would we be able to help out because of the recent storm? Would we be able to use CARES Act funds to help out people that have been impacted by that, businesses?
That's one thing you could do, yes. It's discretionary funds.
Okay. So just to be clear to those that we've had questions about, I mean, I definitely, and I think most of the council, if not everybody, definitely supports using some, if not all. I'm not sure of the remaining funds to help out small businesses the best we can, whether it's through some grant process. But especially, I agree with the need to maybe reassess some of the things we've talked about a few weeks ago, given this storm event. Where we've seen several restaurants downtown and throughout the city really that have posted about how they're, you know, having to throw out a lot of food now. And they're going to have to restock, and they're already struggling. So, you know, those are definitely things that I would be interested in looking at helping out with, with these remaining funds. And as others have mentioned, there are needs throughout the city, way more need than we would have funding for. Even if we could use the whole amount on absolutely everything, there would still be outstanding needs in the city for sure. But I do look forward to and definitely commit to continuing the discussion about how we use the remaining funds to best help our businesses that are struggling right now. Thanks.
Councilmember Holman, were you wanting to ask Mr. Shim questions now or later?
Maybe, yeah, now's fine. If he's, yeah, is he with us?
He is. Mr. Shim.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Holman, did you have a specific question or you want me to touch a bit on what you touched on earlier?
Mainly that, just kind of talk to us about, about some, yeah, those aspects that I mentioned, you know, the concern about people with tourism thing, but why we do need it. And so why, just kind of what these would be used, these funds would be used for and why, you know, you think it would be an appropriate thing for us to do. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So of the 575, approximately 150,000 of that would go into the fund balance. So Mr. Francisco has talked to you all about the guest tax fund balance and both arts and Visit Norman. Due to the reduced stays at our hotels, had to dip into that fund balance and are running negative. So a portion of this would go to pay back that fund balance to get us back to level. The need for the remaining funds would get us back to our budgeted number. And we're marketing Norman with those dollars. As you've talked about, our restaurants are struggling, our shops are struggling, and we need people to come to the community and spend dollars here. We've shifted our efforts a bit to a more internal focus during COVID right now. We organized and hosted the inaugural restaurant week. We've done just last weekend, the Oktoberfest, where we tried to get people downtown. We've helped with Boomer Bash and the summer sidewalk sales. So the goal will be to get people out and spending their dollars. For Restaurant Week, we were able to allocate some advertising dollars that typically would go outside of the region. And we just did the metro to digitally target people that are foodies and likely to travel for Restaurant Week type events. So we're able to really dig down and get a good, good targeted demographic for what we're going after. But there's a pent up demand for travel right now, but it's changed. People aren't taking their big trips to Costa Rica or Hawaii. They're doing more drive market trips. So those drive markets are extending as well. People don't feel safe on airlines. So what used to be a one or two hour drive market, you're now looking at a four plus hour. People jump in the car and travel places, and they are going to more outdoor experiences. We have the state's only urban state park with Lake Thunderbird. So we're targeting people with digital marketing that would come here, trying to get them to stay longer, advertise our shops and restaurants. So they'll stop and stay there while, while they're here. But people are, people are still wanting to travel, and we still have the safety precautions. We're doing, we partnered with the city on the mask up campaign with the posters and other things. We've been a partner in the reboot Norman campaign. So we're also really touching on the safety aspects and the requirements that we have as far as wearing masks and socially distancing. And we did that with the Oktoberfest as well, spacing people out, social distance, wear a mask if you're not eating or drinking. But it's imperative that not only we rely on our community to get out and support our restaurants and shops, but that we're getting people that are pent up and wanting to, to drive instead of going to Icans or somewhere like that, that we're getting them to come experience all of the great things that Norman has to offer. In addition, we see a slow rebound in visitors coming. But we're not going to have a V-shaped curve where we're back up to where we were immediately next year. And so these funds will be doled out. We're not going to be targeting conferences, conventions, and large events like that. For the foreseeable, short-term future, it's more leisure travel. And so we'll be putting the marketing dollars and advertising dollars towards things like that. I see conferences and conventions coming back, but it's probably looking more like end of '21 or '22. But those planners are still planning this, and we need to be out there in front of them talking about it. We have enough soccer fields that we can host tournaments. There was a big tournament this past weekend out there. And our hotels are seeing a bigger impact with baseball tournaments that have happened in Moore and the soccer tournaments that are coming to town than they have for OU football games this year. So the more we can market and let people know, come stay here instead of downtown Oklahoma City or other places. It helps all of our shops, restaurants, sales, tax revenue, et cetera.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate the information. I'm sure my colleagues have several questions overall as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Patrone.
Hi, Mr. Shim. So one thing I heard you say was that it was going to go to any employee salaries. Is that correct?
Well, we have a budgeted number. Our budget includes employee salaries and benefits. So these, these dollars will go to help our overall budget number. The guest tax dollars that are already coming in are paying salaries now. So all of these dollars, if we do not receive these, we'll do everything we can to cut back and try and maintain our salaries and staff. But it would probably be at the expense of many of our marketing programs. So I can't guarantee that none of it would go towards that, being that we're going to try and keep the organization going over the next year or two years. But a majority of those dollars would go towards marketing programs that are getting people here to Norman.
And are you still employed at Visit Norman?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I thought I saw a news article that you had gone somewhere else. I wasn't sure where. Anyway, I was at the time, but now I don't remember. How many employees does Visit Norman have?
We have four currently. We had five prior to the pandemic. We have one that gave their two-week notice right before the pandemic, and we have not filled that visitor services position.
Okay. So if you were giving a guess, what do you think of this 575,000? You said 150 would be going to bring it out of the red.
The fund balance.
So can you give me a guesstimate on the remainder, what that would be for going to salaries and benefits?
Yeah, I don't anticipate any of it going to salaries and benefits. But I don't want to promise that we wouldn't need to dip into that a little bit. The plan for this is to go into marketing programs for, mostly for the leisure side with groups and conferences planning a couple of years out. What we would do is use this for leisure travel. People are wanting to get out and take these day trips, like I said. And so getting them to come to the lake, visit our restaurants while they're here in town, come visit our world-class museums and outdoor activities that we have. We have a lot of festivals typically in Norman. And so if we're able to continue those, the Christmas parade is doing a reverse parade this year where the people are in their cars driving around. And the, the displays will be static around Andrews Park. And so we would market that to the surrounding metro community. We've got about 20 calls today about Fall Fest and asking about it being canceled. So we have people come from outside the metro for our events. As we're able to safely conduct things like Oktoberfest and others in an outdoor setting, we'll be marketing around the region for that, trying to get people to come visit.
Okay. I mean, I think back to what Kate said just not too long ago about kind of basically the making compromises with this. I happen to be in the camp. I think that you all do a great job of what you do. I don't feel like people have a lot of leisure money right now. So I happen to be more liking the idea of what we're doing with Norman Regional and buying gift cards to spread. You know, we're giving these to the first responders, and I kind of think it's a better help to our local businesses. If we were to buy gift cards and spread them throughout the community from our local retailers, that they would go and spend the money that they, you know, they didn't have to come up with on their own, their own dollars, rather than the marketing for this personally. That said, you know, I'm, I'm not going to shoot down this whole package based on this allocation for Visit Norman. All I would say is I would really encourage you all to think more along the lines of putting money into, into programs that we're sure are actually going to make it back to those small businesses, small businesses like what the idea was for Norman Regional. I think that's super effective in getting, buying gift cards from local retailers right now is a really great way to help them get through these tough times. So I don't know, I, I feel like it's a little bit. I don't know, like we're not really paying attention to the economic situation that people are in right now with this, and that's a large chunk of money, the 575. But if that's what the rest of them want to do, then, I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not going to overrule it with just this one. So that doesn't mean though that I don't appreciate you. I do. I just felt like I needed to. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. I was just on a call with the Department of Tourism today and seeing some numbers. They contract with a company called Arrivalist, and it tracks mobile data and what people are doing. And so I do agree with you, there is a lot of economic hardship out there right now. But there are, there is a segment of the population that is still taking road trips. The state's getting ready to put about $2 million into a campaign through the end of the year to try and get people to travel to the state. Being the state's third largest city, we want to be able to piggyback on that and make sure that we get our fair share of visitors coming for that as well. And we've done a good job partnering with them in the past as they have a bigger reach than we do with just our, our guest tax dollars. And so being able to partner with them, they're seeing a demand for people still traveling on these road trips and things. So I do agree, there's a lot of hardship out there, but there is a segment of population that is still taking these road trips. And I love the idea of gift cards as well. And we've done some bingo cards and other promotions to try and get our locals out doing that as well. But we'll, we'll try and continue to find creative ways to get dollars directly into our businesses.
Thank you.
Councilman Foreman.
So at the council retreat that Friday, there was about like 12 of you there on here right now. And we talked about the senior center. It was talked about maybe three, three million, four, three and a half. And I really advocated for the whole amount just to get it over with. The city, we owe it to the seniors. Let's just do this. So I'm very for a lot of the things that are on this list. But at the same time, the public, we have this money coming in because we, as a collective, have all felt hardships. And all I asked for was just a couple of weeks to talk about it. So I will be voting no tonight on this, just on principle for that. But don't take that as I don't support what we had discussed and what is on the list. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Shim, are you still there?
Yes. I am.
Okay, I see you. So I'd like to just pursue a few other points on the Visit Norman topic. I was appointed to serve as an ex officio member of the Visit Norman Board this past year. So I've had the opportunity to get intimately in. year, so I've had the opportunity to get intimately involved with the operation of Visit Norman. And I'm glad that you pointed out that you are working with a reduced staff because I know that was something that you have also had to address during the pandemic as other organizations and agencies in town have also had to make do with not replacing staff in order to preserve your budget. So I'm glad that you brought that up. You mentioned a few of the things that you have done to support our local businesses and the support that you have given to the downtowners in particular and supporting game day activities for our local businesses. But I also wanted to point out, and if you wanted to expand on some of the things that you did immediately following the shutdown to support our local businesses, which I know included building a database of our local restaurants and who was open for business and the kinds of either delivery or takeout that they provided. Could you expand a little bit on that and anything else that you did to respond so quickly at the beginning of the pandemic?
Absolutely. And I'll touch on the staffing issue briefly first, but we've gotten creative with our staff and found different talents that they each have as well. So our salespeople as conferences and conventions weren't and aren't really happening right now. We found one of our sales staff is an excellent event planner, so she has really helped with the planning of our Oktoberfest events and our sidewalk sales and our restaurant week. And so we continue to do stuff like that, which injects money directly to our local businesses. And then we found our other salesperson has a talent for videography. And so we've been doing a series called Out and About in Norman, highlighting our local businesses where you can eat, stay, and play. So we've gotten over 1,000 views on most of those videos, and so those are on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, and other places. So we're really highlighting our local businesses that way as well with existing staff that this was the other duties as assigned on their job description. But immediately when the pandemic happened, we partnered with the city, the chamber, and other entities, our business districts, to try and generate revenue and patrons for all of our local businesses. We did that through the reboot Norman efforts with bingo cards, trying to get people to complete their cards, which included takeout, shopping at a local shop, visiting a, one of our art galleries, those types of things. So we did that. We created the database for all of our restaurants that were still open and the services they were providing, so whether that was a delivery, carryout, curbside, other things like that. We highlighted restaurants through our social media channels to try and generate business that way. We've highlighted our business districts as well. So really shifted our focus from external marketing to helping internally with our local businesses and just trying to help them survive because, you know, the local businesses we have that are unique to Norman are the heart and soul of our community. And each time we lose one, it takes a little bit of our character away. So we want to make sure that all those businesses are here when the pandemic's over so that we have things for people to come see in Norman, and it's not just chain restaurants and boarded-up buildings. So it's vitally important that we continue to support all of our business districts, and we're trying to continually find creative ways to do that.
So my observation has been that you have really tried to be nimble and adapt in an adverse situation to support our local businesses and, as you say, to do whatever we can to maintain that unique character that makes Norman a place that people want to come and visit, not to mention, you know, continuing to try to support our sports teams that are still trying to function and bring people here to Norman. Could you also just give us a sense of the drastic dip in occupancy over the last six months or so? I know in one communication that we received, you described it not as a recession in the tourist industry, but a depression in the tourist industry. Could you expand a little bit on how hard-hit both Visit Norman and the Norman Arts Council have been hit because of the reduced occupancy rate and lack of collection of the hotel motel tax?
Absolutely. The travel and tourism industry, I think, was hit the hardest, and it most likely is going to take the longest to bounce back. So we're hunkering down for a long U-shaped recovery, and these funds would help us be able to market Norman to people that are out traveling and visiting as well as supporting our local community businesses. We saw in late March, April, and May, then during the beginning of the pandemic, our guest tax, our occupancy at our hotels dropped down into the single digits, 5% and less, and that was with zeros, not including the zeros that we had at a handful of our hotels that just shut down for a month, two months at a time. So each time someone stays at a hotel, they're paying a guest tax of 5%. So on a $100 a night room, you would pay $5. A portion of that half goes to Visit Norman, the other half is split between the arts and the parks. So each visitor that comes truly impacts the quality of life for our residents as well as providing funds for the arts, parks, and Visit Norman. We're seeing that slowly come up a bit, but it is slowly trickling up. We saw it, I think, in June go into the 20% range, when we're typically 60-plus percent occupancy, and our rates are significantly down as well. And talking with Anthony, as we were going, no one's been through this before, so we didn't know what to expect with football and with 25% fans in the stands. That's still 20,000 people. We have 3,000 hotel rooms approximately in Norman. Would they still be full? And the first game, we saw probably a 40% occupancy for a typical game day. Were sold out 90 days out, and we're getting two and three times average daily rates for those game weekends. We were getting lower-than-average rates at 40% occupancy for those game weekends. So we didn't see the impact that typically we do for those. Our merchant associations that generally rely on that traffic did not see what they were getting or what they're used to getting. So right now, in October, September, we're seeing occupancy rates that have ticked back up to in the 30s and 40s, depending on when you're looking at it, what days of the week. So we get a monthly average of what's going on. And so we're seeing, you know, a drastic 50% reduction in guest tax that are collected.
Well, thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned our six football game days this year reduced to five, I believe, and just the dramatic impact that the hotel motel tax fund, the hit that that's taken because of just that particular thing. So I'm glad that you touched on that. And I also believe that you were already anticipating a cut even before the pandemic because of the less-than-robust sales tax that we're experiencing anyway. Can you address that?
Yes, that's right. Through the budgeting process, we receive our estimated number in February or so. We begin to put the budget together and have that to council by March, which then goes through the process of first readings and public hearings and other things. It's then approved at the end of June for a July 1 fiscal year. So as you know, we went through our budgeting process a little differently than normal. And so the number that we were given of $850,000, which was still a reduction from the prior year, but not significant. We put a budget together based on that number that we sent to council for approval, but we also put together a couple other options of if, depending on what happened with the pandemic, the guest tax was less than to be expected, here's how we would handle that. And, you know, I think right now what we've seen is the worst-case scenario of guest tax revenue being collected. So we're at the point now, without funding through these CARESAC dollars, that we would just go into bare bones, survival mode. We wouldn't have dollars to do much marketing. We're looking at laying off some staff and just trying to keep the organization viable until we can get back to where we were a little more normal than what we are now. So we are under a contract for some of the items, so we're negotiating reduction in those, cutting back expenses wherever we can, not rehiring staff that left, certainly making every cut that we can. And we're trying to put all of the dollars that we do have into marketing to help our hotels, our shops, and our restaurants.
Thank you. I appreciate you expanding on all those points because my observation has been that your budget has been challenged, just like the Norman Arts Council budget has been challenged, and you were already dealing with reductions even before we knew that we were going to have to really take into consideration the lack of the production of the hotel motel tax. I'd also like to point out that your share of the hotel motel tax is 50%. The Arts Council's share is 25%. And you're asking for just a little bit more than the Arts Council, even though your share of the hotel motel tax is 25% more. So I, under the circumstances and because I've really watched this throughout the year and the adjustments that you made, I think it's appropriate that, since both of the organizations who have been hit hard by the hotel motel tax, that we find some relief for both the Norman Arts Council and for Visit Norman. Thank you for explaining some of your positions.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Bierman.
Hi, Dan. I appreciate the thorough explanation of everything that you have done here and everything that you're planning to do. And I completely agree that you should be made a whole balance from last year. Impact of this is going to continue well into 2021, if not beyond. But I am very, very worried about intentionally trying to bring more people to our community right now with a mask mandate that we can't enforce, with no statewide enforcement of really anything at this point, and with cases that are trending in the wrong direction and at an extremely rapid rate. We are doing nothing to check this virus. We're not. I mean, we're really not. And if we're going to intentionally bring people to our community, the people who are going to be most impacted by this are service workers, are retail workers. These types of workers tend to not have the same access to health care as the people who have the luxury and the privilege of traveling right now. And even if they do have access to it, there is nothing to say that that access is even going to be successful in treating them. And I'm going to get emotional here because a very beloved member of this community died last night waiting on a kidney transplant. He had not left his home except to go to doctor's appointments. And he died last night at 37 years old with all of the access to treatment that everyone has promised us from the top down. He had access to that treatment, but it didn't work. And now his widow has to figure out how to live from here and still pay his hospital bills for treatment that did not work. I don't believe that this is the right time to be actively encouraging people from out of town and out of state to be coming to our community. But I do think we need to be supporting our residents who will be impacted by the intentional effort to bring people to this community. I do believe that we need to be supporting our local businesses, but I would much prefer, and I beg you to consider, trying to figure out ways, like Councilmember Petron suggested, of supporting local businesses in a way that doesn't also harm public health, because that is my worry right now. We all have never been through this before, and I understand that you are simply trying to do the best you can with the tools that you have and with the expertise that you are used to using in this area. But I think we need to be exceedingly careful right now. We are in for a very, very difficult winter, and I do not want to lose more members of our community if we can help it at all. And so please, I want you to have this money that we have allocated for you, but I want us to use it in a way that is responsible and respectful of public health. So please, that is all I ask of you. Please.
Thank you, Councilmember Bierman. I think absolutely we are very cognizant of the fact that we're in a pandemic and we want to be as safe as possible. And we've already shifted dollars to things such as the Oktoberfest that was outside under a tent, sidewalk sales that allows people to shop outside that are local here. So we have shifted much of our efforts from that external to internal and getting people out and about that way. So we will continue to do that as well.
Okay, Mayor Clark, I'm seeing no other comments.
All right. Well, as always, thank you for the great discussion, and that's a lot of information. Appreciate all of you. But the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Do you take comment?
Councilmember Bierman.
Oh.
I, but is there supposed to be public comment?
Yeah.
We already, we did public comment and shut it down, and then you guys went back.
But shouldn't there be public comment on this resolution?
Oh, wow, you're right. Okay, let me see.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. My apologies. I got confused as well with the motion to postpone. So this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. You can, is there anyone at City Hall tonight?
No, ma'am. I do have some emails. This is from Shelley Harris. Please postpone the vote to let citizens have input. From Mike Charbonneau, postpone the vote, please. Unbelievable. Greg Grossens, Gross Hands, I'm sorry if I'm butchering these names. From Ward 6, the vote should be postponed until November 10th for more Ward 6 input and education. If this was discussed at the retreat, the public news about it was not, has not been adequate. I just learned about this last night. The same gentleman, Mr. Charbonne, again, why are we funding a senior center? $4.8 million. The funds were designed to mitigate impact from pandemic and not provide a center, which they can clearly not use during a pandemic or as a result of the pandemic. Has many of you practiced safe distancing and mask mandates? And then parentheses, he has your use of Zoom calls for city council meeting. I am shocked that you would utilize the funds to fund a center where people can congregate and potentially exacerbate pandemic conditions. This is egregious abuse of CARES funds. I am a business owner that serves the geriatric population each and every day. Funding a senior center, although altruistic is the way it sounds, is not helpful during a pandemic, nor is it reimbursement for expenses from pandemic. Our seniors are frightened. They have resorted to staying at home and avoiding contact with others. They at times have avoided making physicians' appointments or health departments as they should. Why should this funding not go to reimburse, do reimbursement of keeping them safe at home? Funding could be used to enhance education and utilization of virtual visits or technology enabling them to remain sequestered. Along those same lines, it could be used for education of ordering and delivering appropriate nutrition. You have chose to, once again, refuse to listen to your community in order to progress your agenda. There is zero listed to aid your community businesses. As a business owner and a resident, I am so terribly disappointed. Do you not notice the closures and forfeitures of our city? You have included no aid in your proposals, none. There are multitude of ways you can offer assistance through this funding. You have chosen to, once again, refuse to listen to your community in order to progress your agenda, disappointed and in utter opposition. Another comment from Gregory Grossens. I do support the senior center and appropriation funds. I have concerns about the other items. I do not want Norman to be in the same situation as Oklahoma County, where they are giving awards to jail employees with COVID money. We need to make sure there is judicious use of this money following the letter of the COVID law. COVID law. From Kendra Wesson, Ward Three, I would like to point out that these items are not council's wants. These items should be the will of the people. Please take a moment and listen to your constituents. Your decisions affect us, and you should represent the people. Kate's statement, I'm sure none of us got everything we wanted. Did the people get what they wanted, or does the council know? From Cindy Rogers, a comment on CARES Act resolution. Does it make sense to put money into tourism during a pandemic which severely impacts travel? It is advisable to bring people to Norman during, is it advisable to bring people to Norman during a pandemic? Isn't the director of Visit Norman doing double duty as president of NEDC? Are we getting any cost savings from that? Kendra Wesson, Ward Three, again. Did you know that there is no accountability for statements made by the council members or mayor? Citizens should always use their own resources and research. They literally have zero consequences for Facebook posts or anything else that say, they say or post. From Denise Sober, I am disappointed with the postponement decline in the use of funds in the package. Is there an opportunity to vote on each item on the package separate? I would also like to request that businesses within the city of Norman be the only ones allowed to bid on the construction projects that are using the CARES Act. We can do better for Norman, let's keep this money within our city. Also, thank you, Mr. Holman, for addressing my questions from my email. Sorry. From Dara Rice, how will you decide what business to buy gift cards from and what businesses you will support? Okay, I'm sorry, some of these have been emailed to me like four times. From Shelley Harris, I am very disappointed at the vote, to not postpone the vote on item 25. The mayor said there had been plenty of discussion and everyone understood the information on item 25, yet the council themselves continued to have questions, misunderstanding, and prolonged discussion, and the citizens are not allowed to comment. We know that this was done behind closed doors. Not one person has mentioned the actual cost of the purchase price of proposed homeless shelter building on Porter. What about the cost of renovations and staffing and maintenance long term? We see what is happening. Most are not listening and using the senior center to hide the expense of the homeless shelter. We are not as uninformed or simple as hoped. We will remember at the voting booth, there are thousands and thousands that cannot wait to vote. There will be no ward winners by a handful of votes, or a mayor with only 6,000 votes. The community is stressed and tired of being played as fools so that the political ideals, ideas of very few can be enacted upon us. We do not, we do thank council members Foreman, Nash, and Peacock. For Marian Nunez, 500,000 seems like an astronomical amount for Visit Norman and strongly agree with Kate's, Bierman's points. Now is not the time to spend this much money on tourism and bringing people together. From Dara Rice, once again, please postpone the vote. From Erin Gavigan, please consider the CARES Act funds are not, are an investment that Norman will have people and organizations in place when the pandemic ends. If we don't support now, the people to run the organizations, facilities, and programs will not be here on the other side. And that concludes the public comments.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman?
Two questions first, that came up because of the comments I heard. We've talked about it before, the construction time that we're estimating for the senior center in the location that we've, that the ad hoc committee has selected on the Porter site. We talked about how long we expect the construction to take, how long we think for if we approve this tonight, until the senior center would actually open. I believe it was something around 18 months, but maybe a clarification on that. Clarification on the bidding process, I think that was a good question. I think there might be some roadblocks in the way of us guaranteeing that it's a Norman company that builds it, but I would definitely prefer that if possible. I think there's the Competitive Bidding Act that may put that out of our control, but if we might talk about those two things briefly.
Yeah, I'll take a shot at that. The timeline would be about six more months to complete the construction documents, and then another 18 months or so to do the construction. So about two years from now, plus or minus a little bit to get it complete. And then we would go through a bidding process or a selection process for, to select a contractor. We've been using a contractor risk method where we do a selection process, and then they do competitive bidding for all the different subcomponents of the project. So in either case, there's competitive bidding on the project.
Was there, I think Catherine had some.
Yeah, hopefully my microphone works a little bit better this time. So the Competitive Bidding Act requires that we choose the lowest responsible bidder. Our code says lowest and best bidder. And we do use criteria oftentimes to determine what's the most responsible bidder or best bidder, but we do take into account price, of course, as well. And so that's always weighted heavier. But we've weighted local, local bidders before state, you know, in-house, in-state bidders before, and given priority points for that in some of our ranking processes. It's just usually not a controlling factor because we're looking also at experience, similar types of projects, oftentimes depending on the type of project we're talking about, and of course, the price so that we know we're getting the best bang out of our taxpayer dollars.
Appreciate that. I, I agree. I want the best project or the best work to be done. But you know, if it was close between a Norman contractor and someone from out of town, they were right there, maybe the cost is just a little bit different. I would definitely prefer to maybe pay a little bit more so we can get the local person there comparable, for sure. But I think that was a good question. Also, we talked briefly about the, the coupling here with the senior center, but also for the building on North Porter that we're talking about that is currently owned by Norman Regional Hospital. Because I think there's some confusion about the relationship there and why we're doing this. Whoever might be able to talk about that. Anybody?
Well, I can tell you, we have had conversations with the hospital about that property. As you all know, we own about 12 acres of the Porter campus, and so this is being discussed on a broader scale than just the senior center. And it's, it comes into play with the entire redesign of that campus, and then also this building that, that they are willing to vacate at some point and include as part of that transaction. That building could serve a lot of purposes for the city. It could be the, a more permanent location for our winter warming shelter. It could be a place to provide services, to provide a central location for, for social service providers, all kinds of things, yet to be determined. But we know that, that those are needs that have been identified in the community, and this building could serve as, as a place to, to better serve those communities in need.
Appreciate that clarification. I think it's real important that people understand what we're talking about here as far as those two buildings and a long-term potential solution for a warming shelter and sobering center the county's been talking about, a central hub for non, our nonprofit service providers in Norman to, to be able to meet or have offices need to. Something we've all talked about a lot. I think there is a lot of support for in the community, but I think, you know, these types of details are real important, and we're trying to get that story out to voters so they can understand why we're making the decisions we are. So I appreciate that information. I would just say I do support this, this proposal. I think, as I mentioned, why I support senior center part of it, I do think it is, it is an appropriate expenditure, especially based on the state-approved guidelines from the state government that is really allowing us to use the money for this. It is a health and wellness need, in my opinion, and the construction of it could definitely be an economic positive for the local economy. And just a good thing to do, a positive thing to finally get moving forward, I guess, to the final step. Maybe we've been moving towards it for years, but to finally get to this point is a really big deal. And we've all identified that it's a priority for us. Councilmembers for years have, people have been running on it in their platforms to get elected. And so we're finally at an opportunity where we can. So I'm going to, I am going to support it. I do think, I agree with comments from Councilmember Bierman and others about Visit Norman money. I definitely want to see this as much focused on local support as possible. I do continue, well, continue having those concerns about, you know, gatherings and tourism and bringing people here, but I do understand the long-term outlook, trying to look, you know, into the end of next year, into 2022, about a long-term recovery, and do have to plan for that now as best we can. So I, I am going to support this, but I do strongly encourage that we, that we make sure that we're doing everything we can with these dollars to prop up, promote local stuff. Getting, I think Dan did touch on a little bit, is really promoting Norman residents to get out and support their local businesses more so than bringing in tourism, but I do understand the need for that planning in the future. I look forward to the continued discussion about how the rest of these funds will be used, as we've all talked about, and we know now, especially with this weather event, there's a lot more need now than there was before the other day for our local businesses that are being hit pretty hard by this loss of electricity and perishable goods and all sorts of stuff, especially restaurants when they were already struggling. So I do want to continue working on a process by which we can help out our local businesses that really need it right now, that, you know, especially ones that we're not able to qualify for other federal help or other loans and things like that. So we have a good chunk, and as I mentioned before, there are so many needs that we could use that for. There's way more needs than there is money. And I think we'll have a pretty healthy debate and discussion with ourselves and our constituents about what is the best, best way to use those. So that is my thoughts on that tonight. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, Mayor.
All right. Now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patrone?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
No.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The item, resolution passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Foreman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have had a request for a bathroom break. We have been at it for two hours, so please, let's be back. Let's make it a four-minute instead of five-minute. I'll see you at 8:40. Please mic or turn off your mics and your videos. Please mic or turn off your mics and your videos.
Looks like we're waiting for two more. One more. Well, while we're waiting for one more, I'll just start reading. Okay, item 26 has been withdrawn by staff. Item 27, ordinance 2021-4, adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the University North Park Business Improvement District, the time in terms of payment of assessments and expense, fixing penalties for delinquent payment, setting the tracks of land which assessment are being adopted, directing the city clerk to sign, attest, and report with the city, excuse me, Cleveland County clerk following passage of payment deadline, and claim of lien for unpaid amount. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Still move.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize our city attorney, Ms. Catherine Walker, to make a presentation.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief. This Business Improvement District was adopted back in 2014. This is what funds the maintenance of Legacy Park and University North Park. It was started with $900,000 from, into funds to fund the maintenance of the park. But, but through the bid process and on petition of the property owners in U N P, we were able to create a system under state law where the property owners are assessed each year proportionate share of the maintenance cost. So when it started, the city, through the TIF funds, funded the $200,000 target that first year. The second year, our portion dropped to 175,000. And the, the property owners were assessed 25,000, and it's continued that way. Bids last for 10 years under state law. We are nearing the end of the TIF contribution. This is actually the last year the TIF will be contributing to this. So this year, our assessment is 25,000 using TIF funds that were allocated in, in the 2019 amendments to the project plan and to the master agreement. And $175,000 is being assessed against the property owners within U N P. Now, I go through a process each year where I, where I get the taxable value of each property and determine the proportionate share. And so that's Exhibit A to the ordinance. You can see what, what each property owner will be collecting. And so this is really just a continuation of that process. After this, there are two more years left in the Business Improvement District whereby the property owners will be responsible for 100% of that $200,000 annual target. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember?
Yeah, just after the 10 years, the, the bid could be extended by the property owners or by the council then or both?
Under state law, bids are typically created upon petition of the property owners, but there is a provision where the city could create one on its own. I, I don't know yet what the property owners would be willing to do. We have an advisory board that makes recommendations to you all about the use of these funds that are collected beyond what's needed for maintenance. That's made up of property owners. And so as we get closer to the end of this, I'm sure that's something we'll be discussing to determine what steps we need to take moving forward.
Thank you.
Mayor Clark, I'm seeing no other questions?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
I'm seeing none.
All right, are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Once again, seeing none.
All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. On to item 28A, Resolution 2022-34, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property on the northwest corner of Tecumseh Road and 12th Avenue Northwest from low-density residential, medium-density residential, commercial, office, industrial, and open space destinations to designations, to mixed-use designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Sean Rieger to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and we appreciate very much council allowing us to come tonight on a special night with this storm to present the Appin's matter here. So thank you very much. If it's okay with you, I'll share the screen and go through this item. All right, thank you. So I'll be quick as well tonight. This is an item that comes to you with no controversy that I'm aware of. It has been flying through process fairly easily, but I'll make sure you're fully aware of it and take you through the item. We're on Ward Eight tonight. On this one, we're in, off Tecumseh Road and 12th Avenue Northwest. It's about a 139-acre tract. That's the railroad tracks right there. A little better view of it is right here. So you see the parcel right there, the railroad tracks coming up through the middle there, Tecumseh Road right here, I-35 over here, Normal Regional Hospital. Cisco is right across the street from us, and Moore Norman Technology Center just in the north. This is an item that has come through previously, and some of you have been on council for a long time, may have seen this one before. It's about 139 acres of raw land right up in, throughout this area. There is an apartment complex being built right there. The current aerial doesn't show yet, but it's under construction right now. And again, Cisco right here, just off to the southeast is Greenleaf Trails, an Ideal Homes subdivision. And this matter tonight is, is basically, the residential parts of it are Ideal Homes and Landmark Homes, some of the great developers of Norman, Oklahoma on this item. So, and quickly, why this probably not controversy at all is because it is really an update improvement bud from what was approved in 2010. On the left, what you're looking at is what was approved in 2010. And on the right, what you're looking at is what's proposed tonight. And your eyes aren't deceiving you, and it really is that similar. So you can see the commercial corner on the south, what, southeast is identical from 2010. There's a town host, town home development right there that is identical from 2010. There's a light industrial area here that is a little bit different because there is an open space that has come down a little farther into it in this proposal. And then the main bodies of this proposal are two residential areas, one in the upper left, which you can see is very similar to what is proposed tonight, and one on the middle right that also is very similar to what is proposed tonight. Slight differences though, and let me take you through those so you're aware of what's happening. 2010 on the left, and this is what's proposed tonight on the right. As the staff report says, basically what this is, is a more detailed plan than what was approved in 2010. And this current pud takes away mining use. There was a minor little mining use that was in it before, but primarily, the biggest change in this one is that this pud brings single-family lots out of the floodplain area. This pud has much more recognition and protections of the WQPC zone. And this, this one basically is a much more robust stormwater plan than what was adopted in 2010. So that's really the biggest change. As to the single-family areas, there's a few more lots in this one, 225 lots on the upper left. And on the right is a gated community with private streets of about 99 lots. You can see the different uses. I won't go through all of them here, but basically it is a reduction in different areas here, except for open space. As you can see, is about four more acres of open space, and that really is in the middle area right here, which gives it much more of a WQPC protection than we had before. It's come through the process very well. A Green Belt Commission was highly complimentary of this matter. They said the Appin's development was mindful of the importance of the trail connections through the open space and throughout the development. And really, I think, as you know, that's a hallmark of Ideal Homes and Landmark Homes. They're renowned for that. They do it all over town. This is no different. They will do that again here. This one notably has legacy trail going through it. You see in the upper right, right there is legacy trail. They will build that, and of course, it will connect on as it continues to develop in this area. And that legacy trail will have connections back into the development up into here, not as legacy trail, but as trail connections back up into the area. So these homeowners can enjoy that as well. Let me go back one other thing. I'll show you here, that blue line is the floodplain, and you can see now where these lots come out of the floodplain. That is different than before. If you see in this slide, before, we had backyards in the floodplain back in 2010. And that's a major change on this development. Now those backyards are not in the floodplain at all. So just a final slide here, this is the context. You can see the single-family homes in the back. We've maintained the buffering, and basically this was developed as a large development with buffering because we have the juvenile detention facility right here, railroad, Cisco. And so these uses that are along the south are really the buffer between those uses on Tecumseh Road and the single-family uses to the north. So final slide, again, it's come through really remarkably well. The big changes of the WQPC, the protections for that and drainage, and a much more detailed pud in this one than what was in before. Unanimous plan commission, there are no protests, nobody even came pre-development, and nobody spoke at plan commission. Parks Board recommended approval, and Green Mill Commission highly complimentary with their comments as well. So we have the full team here tonight, Richard McCown, Ideal Homes, Landmark, S M C. Everybody is here to answer any questions they have. And with that, I appreciate your consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Council?
Councilor Peacock? Thanks. I appreciate that presentation. I noticed on the 2010 version, there was two large detention ponds shown. Are those intact in the, in the current version?
Yeah, if it's okay with you, I'll share the screen and bring it up and.
I thought I saw them, but.
Yeah, let me bring it back up here. And my next guy, Mohammed Khan with S M C is on the call with us tonight. Let me bring up a little bit more, a better scene. That's a pretty good drawing right there. Mohammed, do you want to comment further on the detention facilities through the middle of this? Mohammed, can I, Mike, hang on one second. Chris Anderson, Mohammed with S M C is on us. Mohammed, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. Good evening, Mohammed Khan with S M C Consulting, 850 West Main, 73106. So yes, the concept is still there to support the site with a series of two detention pond. And these ponds will function in a cascade format. So the off-site runoff and the onsite runoff will enter into detention pond, which we are calling it is our upper pond. And then the stormwater will go through the treatment process as well as the storage purposes, and then it'll cascade into the lower pond. And then from there, we will have a ultimate outlet control structure. So the stormwater flows from that outlet structure will be lower than historical flow to the downstream floodplain of Little River. And then as part of these ponds, we're also proposing the mitigation measure to compensate for any impact with the water quality protection zone. The area where WQPC is, most of the area remains intact. And based on initial calculations, once this project is completed, there will be an increase in the improved water quality protection zone area. And a series of bio-retention facilities, soakage trench, and bioswells will be constructed to address the impact with the WQPC areas.
Let me, real quick, just so clarity, when Mohammed was talking about his Little River is up in this area in upper right. So this whole site, all of these ponds are cascading and draining from the lower left up to the upper right, towards the Little River up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And real quickly, can you just talk about the, the separation between the single-family and the industrial uses? Is there a buffer planned there or anything?
Yes, let me show you that as well. So this is, first of all, it's light industrial and light industrial, as you might be aware, in Norman, light industrial is, is not the heavy I-2 uses. This is more of what you might see in McDonald Drive and some of those areas, a little bit south here. But basically, we've intentionally had a little green space right here in this area. Also, the site planning is showing parking lot right in here, if you can see that. So basically, a little green buffer in between the residential areas and the industrial on the edge here. We felt it was important to keep the light industrial as it was proposed originally in 2010 because of the Juvenile Detention Center down here, there's a concrete plant over here and the railroad over here. So that made a good edge in this area. And then with that green buffering space in between there, we think that would, should serve adequate.
And are there any trees or anything planned for that green space?
I don't have specifics as to landscape at this point because we're a little premature on this large of a development, but I certainly believe that probably would be in the plans. It would have to be in the plans as to any parking lots in that area because by code, you have to ring the parking lots with trees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. So just a couple of questions, Sean. You mentioned the private streets part of the gated area. Have you mentioned the, how that, how those will be maintained? Definitely had questions about that and other areas of the city about private streets and stuff, so maybe touch on that.
Certainly, thank you, Councilmember, and I'll put it back on streets. All right, jockey, back and forth with the visuals here, but I think it helps me to see them. So what you're asking is this yellow area right here, which is a private community gated. It's gated right over here off Tecumseh, off 12th Avenue, I'm sorry. So these are private streets right here. As private streets, they would be maintained by the homeowner association. And so this would be a heavily funded homeowner association with some, some nice residential homes and single-family homes. They would be fully responsible for the maintenance of that road. Saying that though, it is also important to note that City Norman does have minimum standards, and, and certainly this developer would fully adhere and surpass those. So they can't just build whatever they want, even though it is a private street. They have to ma, they have to build it and then maintain it to city standards as a minimum.
And the traffic situation, just to clarify, the Tecumseh is a four-lane section and the wealth is a two-lane. Are we anticipating a need for a fifth middle turn lane there on Tecumseh or on 12th anytime in the near future due to this?
Yeah, and let me bring in the Traffic Engineering Consultant, T E C, B J Hawkins is with us tonight. There was a lot of discussion about traffic on this one, particularly as to 12th Avenue. And B J, are you on the call that you can answer that question, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
B J Hawkins with Traffic Engineering Consultants, 6,000 Southwestern Avenue. Yeah, we did a traffic study in the, in the existing 2020 conditions. Everything works fine out there. We projected the traffic out to 2030. We did see some delay on the development drives, but all of that delay and queuing will be off the arterials and into the residential. We did not anticipate the need for any improvements on Tecumseh or 12th. At some point, we looked at possibly a signal at the main drive into the development, but it was not warranted in the P and P tower, and it offset with the Cisco drive. So we did not recommend the installation of a signal there or the left turn lanes on that drive.
And what he's talking about there, Councilor, is right there off that, if you can see my pointer, that is the main drive in, in Cisco right here. And this multifamily development is already under construction, so we didn't have the ability to shift that road over, straighten up with that.
That driveway is already constructed.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that would be, I guess, one thing I would definitely want to keep an eye out on, especially with an apartment complex being built there now. And, you know, the eventual full build out of the development would be, you know, any kind of congestion issue there on Tecumseh. If people try and turn left into it, would be definitely a concern to look at in the future. Okay, and I do appreciate you clarifying the, that this is actually a reduction or there's more green space in this than there was in the original one that was approved back then. So I think that's a pretty important aspect of, of this one. So that's all the questions I have. So I think that's a pretty important aspect of, of this one. So that's all the questions I have right now. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Councilman. Only had explained on that a little bit. I was involved in that 2010 zoning and, and, uh, probably you don't know where this, but immediately after that, uh, was when the WQPC zone was adopted, actually. So that zoning in 2010 was adopted shortly before the WQPC ordinance went into effect. And so there was, uh, some concern that that, that plot did not recognize the WQPC zone. This developer, of course, Richard McCown, Ideal Homes, Landmark, uh, uh, without hesitation, recognized WQPC and they've honored that in this development.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Um, uh, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Rieger. Some of the, uh, stormwater issues I think have already been addressed, but you did mention that this plan, um, is much more robust than the original PUD, correct?
That's correct, Councilman.
Yeah. So, um, I think it's really important to continue to see this kind of investment with these kinds of projects in these stormwater plans and, uh, definitely taking advantage of the expertise of Mr. Khan, who we've heard speak to us before, um, because we don't have a stormwater utility currently. The best way we can address some of our stormwater needs are with these new developments and the thought and care that, um, is being put into developing a robust stormwater plan, um, that can mitigate, some of the things that we can't take care of right now through a stormwater utility. So I really do appreciate the effort that's been put into that. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I'm not sure if you can speak to this, if there's someone else on the call that can. But, um, one of the advantages of the process that we use is, um, some of the conversations that are ignited with, um, our planning commissioners along the way. And one of the conversations that came off of this project was a discussion about visitability and aging in place features. And it's my understanding that, um, the developers are very interested in pursuing, um, some of those, um, methods in the construction of some of the single family homes. Can you speak to that or is there someone else who can?
So let me, uh, ask Isaac Christian to pop on. He is Landmark Homes, but I appreciate you recognizing that, Councilmember, and that there was. I'm just brought back up the slide because I think you may be referencing, uh, there was a newspaper article recently in, in the last.
Yes. Yeah.
That's an image of it from Facebook. I would put the whole article up, but yeah, at Plan Commission, that, how that came about, and you're right, we do get some interesting conversations. And, uh, Commissioner Beck, who is an aging in place specialist at the University of Oklahoma College of Architecture, brought that up and it was a follow-up, uh, after Plan Commission, he contacted me and, uh, said, hey, what about this? And, and Dave's really, uh, vigilant about making sure we have aging in place. He, uh, we connected, uh, Landmark Homes with him and they, they were really surprised to find that they were on the same page in a lot of ways. And, uh, this article was written about that. And I believe they went and looked at some projects they've already done and other developments. And I, I think, I don't speak for Commissioner Beck, but I think he was fairly impressed. And, uh, do you want to add into that at all from your perspective?
Yeah, I mean, Sean, you pretty much summed up the, the conversation with Commissioner Beck. Something too that we have, have really tried to consider as far as the visibility and the accessibility is, like minimizing the slopes of the driveway as much as possible, um, trying not to have any steps into the home, accessing from the garage into the home or from the front porch. Like Sean mentioned in that picture, the, the rolling showers. Um, so those are things that, that we have been trying to accommodate and implement in this plan and in this, this product line. And, uh, Mr. Beck also had, had some, some ideas for us that we're going to kind of take back to the drawing board and try to implement as well. So he, he, like Sean said, he was really happy with what he saw. Um, and we're going to continue to try to just build on that concept.
Okay. Um, well, thank you for that. And I thought it was important to just emphasize that that is a feature that you're undertaking with this particular development. As someone who is aging in place and, uh, we have a pretty hefty percentage of seniors in Norman that are looking for, um, housing options, um, after spending, uh, many years and maybe a house that's a little bigger than they'd like now. I really appreciate, um, Landmark and Ideal, um, taking this on and offering some, um, options for our seniors. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilmember Beerman.
So this is going to be one of those rare new development votes that I do support despite us not having a stormwater utility. And it is for the reasons that Councilmember Hall outlined. The stormwater solutions here are engineered extremely well, probably better than we could ever have crafted as policy from City Hall, uh, but also the visitability aspect. This is something I've been working on for a long time. We've got a pending ordinance, an incentive-based ordinance to develop more visitable homes. And the reason why we use the term visitable and not accessible is because it doesn't meet all of the features required to be an accessible home, at least in the ordinance that we've crafted. But the point was even more widespread than just aging in place. And I think that that's also important to point out is that the vast majority of people at some point in their lives will experience a temporarily disabling event, whether it is breaking an ankle or tearing an ACL and needing surgery. And also, you know, if you have children, I'm sure you have struggled to get your stroller up the multiple steps into your home or through narrow doorways, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there are many reasons that even someone who is not at the age of aging in place would want a home where the bones of the structure are better designed for any type of event that might require someone to need assistance. And especially if it can keep someone out of a rehab facility while they are doing that healing, that is better all the way around for us as a society. So I am glad to support this tonight and my hope is that by the time you get around to building some of these homes, there will be an incentive and an ordinance to help encourage that both for this development and future developments moving forward. So I'm happy to support this tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. I would appreciate that. I think the builder industry would, would greatly accept that, uh, as an incentive or something to help them, uh, make it more in the forefront of their construction. Thank you.
I'm seeing no other council, uh, questions at this time.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The land use plan amendment is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Item 28, ordinance 2021 dash nine, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance 0910 dash 17 as amended by ordinance 1516 dash 36 for property located on the northwest corner of Tecumseh Road and 12th Avenue Northwest. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item?
Seeing none, Mayor.
Are there any further public comment?
And once again, seeing none.
Thank you. The motion or any final comments from council?
None.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Carter. Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously.
Thank you. Item 29, a preliminary plat for Flint Hills addition, a planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the preliminary plat.
No move.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the first two items. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Are there any further public comments?
Seeing none.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
None.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Preliminary plat is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On to item 30, ordinance 2021 dash 16, a petition for detachment for approximately 42.83 acres located on the south side of West Bethel Road or Southwest 34th Street on the west side of the railroad tracks. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Point of information.
Yes.
Can we get a presentation on this first before we decide, before we do adopt or reject?
Under Roberts' rules, um, you can have a brief statement of clarification, but you really are not supposed to discuss an item until you have a motion on the floor.
And the presentation is after I get a motion in a second.
Yeah, I have a brief statement of clarification.
What do you need to clarify?
Um. Well, it's all right. I'll let somebody else decide if they want to.
I'll make the motion. So move.
Second.
There's, there's not a motion stated. What, what would you like him to clarify?
Um, is the applicant on the call?
Yes.
Okay. Is he, he or she represented by council or?
Yes.
Um, I'm wondering if this is, and if the intent is to get around the WQPC.
Mr. Nice.
This is Blaine Nice, 100 North Broadway, Oklahoma City for the applicant. And no, Councilmember, it's not. In fact, the staff report indicates that it does not come into play. And Assistant City Attorney Beth McAlley is on the, on the call and she can address that. The purpose of this request has to do with the lack of services available to the property owner from the Norman Utilities Authority.
Yeah, I read the staff report. I just seem to be more of an issue of timing. You can go ahead and give the presentation. I'll let somebody else on council decide if they want to, how to move forward. Thank you, sir.
All right. I'll still entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nice, go ahead and give that presentation.
Well, let me try to share the screen, make sure you, is that up there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, um, I think it's the very last. I'm just saying it. Okay. This is an application, uh, by 34th Street Partners, a petition for attachment. And, and we appreciate your time, Mayor Council. Um, uh, this is the area that's pro, proposed for attachment. As you can see, um, it's on the east side of I-35 and the west side of the railroad tax tracks up at Bethel Road. Um, the wide area around is the city of Moore. So it essentially is surrounded by the city of Moore with the exception of a little bit of where it's touched here by Norman. And in fact, uh, when this process first began, we inquired and tried to determine, you know, we looked at the annexation into Norman, but there was no backup to see why it was annexed into Norman at the time. It was a number of years ago, but there was no supporting documentation. I think I asked the city clerk and we looked and couldn't find anything to show why it initially was, was included in Norman. So that's, um, that's the map. This is the aerial. As you can see, it's undeveloped, surrounded by developed property. The property characteristics are this. My client, uh, owns Shelley Acres and that's 30, uh, 38 acres, more or less. That's actually, the statute requires, uh, an applicant to own more than 75% of the property. They actually own 90% of the property. They have two tracks that they've, uh, purchased. It's zoned A2, A2 rural agriculture and they've owned it since March. When I started looking at it, there's, there's just no services there. The other small parcel is about four acres and it's I-2. It's not being used really right now for anything. I think at one point it had a, an asphalt plant on it, maybe. The owner is not a part of the application, but he has received notifications as required by law. Staff requested that when we begin this process, they said, if you're going to detach your part, you really need to include this portion because it, it would create an island and it's just not practical. And it obviously does not have utilities either. Um, I guess is the purpose for the request. There's no utilities presently. Norman Utilities Authority says it's not practical and there's no services in the foreseeable future. In fact, Mark Daniels, who used to be with the city for a number of year, now on the planning commission, brought that up and said, hey, you know, uh, told the commission, there's just nothing in the future that looks like that they would service that. So we're out there with no services. And in fact, um, this is a map supplied by, uh, the utilities. Chris Maddenley, you can see this is the property in red and the Moore wastewater treatment plant is right there. And Norman's is all the way down here. So it's just, um, it, it's kind of out there on its own, surrounded mostly by the city of Moore. Now, when this process started, I'll be quite frank, um, the city attorney, when I, we filed this, one of these hasn't been done for a long time. And I can't recall in my 25 years with the city that we ever did one that wasn't city initiated maybe for a small portion. And I'm not even sure if we ever did it then. But it's an unusual process where the property owner can file an unsigned petition with the city. They publish notice and then they, uh, file a signed petition with the city, follow that process. So when it came up, um, city staff reviewed this and it was, um, determined or discovered that this city doesn't really in their code have a process for this. Most cities don't. They follow the state statute. Now, one of the things the city of Norman does, and I think a few other cities have this, is that you have to go through planning commission. While, um, and, and under our ordinance or the Norman's ordinance, they have to review it and make recommended, recommendations to council. And that's what they've done. Um, it's, we follow the state statute. And these are staff comments, and I think Beth is there to comment if I, I'm not trying to misstate anything, but, um, it's similar but not identical to other petition processes. The city clerk verifies the signature and they approve that. The legal department evaluated the various other items, uh, that state law requires, and that was all approved. Some of the considerations they had had to do, this is not platted property. I've got it platted in there, but that's what they reviewed, whether it was or not pl- platted. And it is not platted. It's on the boundary. We follow the correct form. Notices have been provided as required. The legal description is, has been evaluated. In fact, this matter started some months ago. We met with city staff several times and had several discussions to get the legal description right, to be sure we didn't leave anything out because it's a real irregular piece of property bounded with some water and railroad tracks and things like that. So in fact, it took a couple of shots, actually three, before we got the legal where the city was comfortable moving forward. So I appreciate their cooperation. We just wanted to be sure we did it right. We don't, don't want to have to come back and say, hey, we, we need to redo this. But, um, legal evaluated that and, and we met all those criteria. and, and we met all those criteria. Public Works evaluated it for their boundary description and those other things, and that includes the wastewater issues. Utilities confirms that they're not going to service this. I mean, it's just not going to happen. Um, and so the timeline on this is on October 8th. Uh, planning commission approved it unanimously at first reading on the 13th. And of course, we were set for Tuesday like everybody else and got moved to tonight. But, um, there were no issues, um, uh, no questions, no comments. Um, as I said, this property, you go back to the first screen, it's really out there kind of by itself. And in fact, let's tell you, when I first started, there was a couple of people at staff said, we didn't realize that was Norman property. So that's why we're here. Um, we don't have an agreement at this point by Moore to annex this in. That's probably in the future. So those services, they would probably provide services now, uh, notwithstanding whether we're annexed in, but they certainly can, whereas the city of Norman cannot. And, uh, it makes good sense. So we wouldn't be here tonight and we'd appreciate, uh, your support and, and this detachment. And, and the property owner is on the, on the call. If you have any questions, um, I'll be happy to answer them if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Beerman?
I have a couple of questions. They're probably more for staff than the applicant. Um, do we know why this particular parcel ended up in city of Norman limits? Because, I mean, the Moore Animal Shelter is south of there. It seems like a very odd piece of property. So I'm wondering why the city of Norman thought it was necessary to include it in our city boundary because we were all.
I think, um, Assistant City Attorney Beth Muckela may be able to provide a little bit of, uh, input here.
I actually, uh, don't, Councilmember Beerman, have the, the history of why this was annexed into, uh, Norman back when it, uh, back when it was. I'm not certain if anyone in Public Works would have any knowledge of that as well.
If, if my council member, um, we did look at the item and it shows where it was requested to be annexed in, that there was no supporting documentation that says the reason. So we know there was an item, and in fact, the city clerk's office reviewed that and it just doesn't exist. So I.
Bane of our existence, the lack of that supporting documentation. Not the first time I've heard that answer.
I promise you, we did ask. That was one of the first.
I understand. Um, my second question, this might be just a little bit, a little bit more technical. Is this technically a de-annexation? And so this is the process that anyone would want to use?
Yeah, it's called a de-annexation. I'll let the city.
I mean, maybe I'm just splitting hairs. I just wanted to make sure that I actually understood it in a term that I recognized.
Yes, from what I can find, detachment and de-annexation are really a matter of how they're termed in, uh, the various codes. But, uh, for us, it is the same.
Okay. And what was intended use of this land that couldn't be done with it in city limits? Are you looking to build a subdivision? And it'll take me too long. So you have our services out there? Like, I'm just curious.
Did you understand the question, Mr. Nice?
For a second.
No, I apologize.
She's asking.
I will ask it again.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to ask, what, what is the intended purpose of this parcel that can't be done with it in city limits? Are you trying to build a subdivision and city services just won't be able to get there fast enough?
At this point, we have no plans. The property owner, I spoke to him today, they have no immediate plans. Um, and in fact, obviously with the current climate, there's no development, I believe. You know, they're going to, uh, grow grass, cut hay on it right now is what I understand. There was some discussion about some soccer fields and things like that, but everything's up in the air, but since there's no utilities there, it can only be used as agricultural. And, and, and so that's the purpose for, for this request.
Okay. Yeah, I do imagine it would be hard to do anything with that land, including sell it with, you know, no guarantee of there being city services at any point in the near future. So, um, I do understand, I do understand this. Um, you know, it feels a little, you know, one of those random unusual things we get to address every now and then. Um, but I, I don't see any issue with this. I just wanted those few questions answered. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peacock?
Uh, yeah, uh, in lieu of bringing any utility services to the site, has the applicant explored, uh, onsite water wells and septic systems?
I, they've only owned the property since March, but it's just not, that's not feasible for long-term development necessarily, I think. But, you know, it's just, um, uh, and I couldn't answer that, uh, right now.
I mean, I think if it's, uh, residential, then yeah, you could probably get by long-term with that kind of setup. But if you're going heavy commercial, uh, something other use, you're probably right. It's a little.
And that I-2 next to it has been, you know, historically been, you know, I-2 fairly intensive use. So I don't, um, as long as that property owner still uses it like that, you know, it's a little difficult to develop next to that. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, so if this is approved, then this is going to be unincorporated? Is that correct?
It is for, you know, uh, yes, it is. We have had discussions with the city of Moore and, you know, I've had discussions, the property owners had discussions. I, I don't think there's any reason why they will not accept it, but they would not entertain that at all until we've actually de-annexed. They, they don't want to get in the business of, of competing with Norman. You can understand that. If, you know, and, and it's our request, not theirs. And I think they want to be very careful that, hey, we're not saying if you move out, you'll come in here. They just said, hey, if you're detached from Norman, you know, we don't see any reason why we cannot service you and likely would. So.
Right. So we're not voting on discussions. Um, so if this is unincorporated, Norman has no say as to how this land is used, correct?
Correct. The county does, but yes, not the city.
Okay. Um, so I, I think that, uh, until we have a solid legal framework to handle this kind of situation, this is going to set a dangerous precedent.
Well, with all due respect, councilmember, there's, this is unusual in that it's surrounded by another, you know, municipality. There's, there's not other areas like that in the city of Norman that I'm aware of. Um, and so, um, it's kind of an island unto itself already as far as that goes. And so I understand your concern. And in my 25 years, uh, with the city, uh, attorney's office, never saw anything like this. And, and the former councilmember, or the councilmember was correct. This is really an unusual deal. I don't see that this is, you know, set a precedent where people are going to try to detach properties. It's just, it's real unique.
It makes me think about maybe detaching my property.
And, and Captain Walker can speak to that. There's some restrictions on that. One of the things, you have to be bounded by a certain amount. So, I mean.
Uh huh. Well, I've always wanted to have a gun range in the backyard. Yeah.
There is a strong legal framework set forth in the statute, and, and that's the process that Mr. Nice has followed for his client this go around. We don't see it often, probably because of what's required to do that. It, it can't be platted. It can't be your one lot in your subdivision, things like that. Um, so it is an unusual request, but, but the legal framework is there and the statute has been followed.
When was the last time a piece of property has been requested to be de-annexed?
I don't, I don't know. Um.
I don't know that anyone's requested the annexation. We have initiated the annexation, um, on the cities, the city has initiated it. Um, the last one I can remember is down by the river, um, where the river had shifted and the land that was in the city limits of Norman was now on the other side of the river. Um, but anytime annexation or de-annexation takes place, it's, there's usually a very, um, particular reason why, um, it doesn't happen often.
So why can't this, uh, piece of property be, um, or why can't discussions be had with Moore to sell the property to, to the city of Moore?
Well, we don't own it.
All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Um, I do have similar, you know, concerns. I think those are valid concerns, just about process and precedents and things like that. I do, uh, and the biggest concern I would have is that would be the Little River being there, as Councilwoman Petron, I think, touched on earlier. I would assume that the Little River there is the main hindrance and why we can't get any services. Cause I mean, the properties that face I-35 there in Norman and they have services. So I'm just assuming that it's because of the Little River that we can't get it across there to it. Is that, am I kind of right there?
Well, I'd like, uh, Public Works to speak to that, but yes, that's my understanding with my conversations with, with both Mark Daniels and I think Chris Mattingly, that, yeah, when you have to go under, you know, a stream like that or whatever, it's difficult. Um, and I will say, um, in, I do recall this, and I couldn't tell you specifically, you know, years ago, city of Norman de-annexed property all the way out to Thunderbird because at that time, the statutes required it own property up to its water sources, I recall. And after that occurred and the law changed, there was de-annexation that took place out east because the properties weren't served and for various other reasons. So it's not, it's totally unusual, but each one of those situations, as, uh, the city clerk pointed out, are very unique.
I'll just mention, Councilmember, that, that's correct. I think the, the location of the Little River, the tributary of Little River, um, creates, um, some real challenging topographic issues for particularly sanitary sewer services. Uh, and then, yes, the physical crossing of a river is always a challenge. Also mentioning that this is, this property is ver, has very limited access. There is no access on the west, south, or east because of, of those land features and a railroad track. So they have very limited access on a small portion of, of Bethel Road, which is effectively a city of Moore roadway system.
Appreciate that. I, uh, I, um, again, in a city of our size, 200 square miles, you know, there could be a lot of areas that are weird and unique that we might come across. I'm surprised it hasn't happened before or not very often in a city this size, um, considering our reach. Uh, but I do think the factors in this one about the railroad tracks and the, it having no connection to the city of Norman at all. It's only accesses on really 34th Street, which is more so. Um, yeah, I do think this is a really unique one, but I, I do agree with the concerns about just making sure that we're not, because it is so unique, that we're not approving something that might get us in trouble later. So, um, I think that's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Petron?
Um, you mentioned a little while ago that your clients bought this just in March. Um, but then you followed it up and said that you didn't know what plans they might have with it. Would they be here to speak to what plans they have with this?
Mr. Russell's on here, and I talked to him earlier today. Um, they really don't have any, any immediate plans. I, I specifically asked him that. And, and part of the reasons with things that are going on right now, it's, you know, things have changed. Uh, they intend right now to, to cut hay on it, as I understand it's agricultural. There was some thought at one point to, to do some soccer fields and, um, things like that. That was the immediate plan. There are no long-term plans as far as commercial development. I'm not saying that somebody could come along tomorrow and say, hey, we would, now that, you know, we would like to do this, but there's nothing in the works. I specifically asked that and there's not. So I'm comfortable representing that, that it's, it wasn't purchased for any specific commercial purpose at this point. I think it was available. Uh, and they don't own that one I-2. They've had discussions. So, I mean, there's some limits on what they could do with that industrial out there anyway. But, um, I, I asked him again because I knew that was, that's a legitimate question would come up, and there are no immediate plans to do anything. They're just trying to kind of clean it up and they can't have services. And so until they can solve that problem, um, and that's not going to happen immediately anyway. So.
Okay, well, what I'm. I guess I, I'm trying to understand what the. Why be here in front of council now for this? I mean, if, if there was no plans for it, and you might, you know, cut hay or you might have a soccer field, but what we decide to do on this end can have major ramifications, why not just wait until you might have some plan of what you want to do with it and then come before us at that point? I mean, it seems a little premature for council to jump right out and de-annex it when any pollution that you might decide, or, you know, is worth it down the road to the Little River is going to end up in our water supply.
Well, first of all, we can't do any development without service. Um, and so you can't get services from the city of Norman. So we're here respectfully tonight to ask that we be detached so that we can seek those services from the city of Moore. Uh, Mr., um, re, I mean, Sean, Sean can speak to the, the impact on the Little River. I, I don't think it applies here, and I don't think there's any issues there. Mr. O'Leary, I, I went blank there for a minute. Um, and, but without services, we can't develop anyway. So, um, you know, we've got to get the, the horse in front of the cart, as it were.
Did your client realize that this was a situation when the purchase this property?
It may or may not, but they, they own the property now. They, we're following the statutory process and asking for de-annexation. So.
Okay, and. And I guess, I don't know if anybody's going to know the answer to this, but does Moore have a similar WQPZ statute that looks like Norman's?
No, councilmember, um, Norman is the only city in Oklahoma and probably one of the few in the Midwest that have an ordinance like that.
Thank you. I feel like I, um, until your client might have a project that they want to plat and, um, bring it before council, and maybe we can get them some services when they approve that. I'd like a better route to go.
Well.
Being low high with this one.
Well, and I understand your concerns, but I will point out that it's surrounded by Moore, so it's not going to impact Norman. And the problem is, we can't come forward with a plat without services in the city of Moore, I mean, excuse me, the city of Norman has told us they're not going to provide those. So I understand, but it's, it's a, you know, it's a catch 22 for the client. So anyway, we're here, we're asking pursuant to the statute for detachment. And I think that, uh, we've met the requirements and I appreciate your concerns.
I understand. I feel like that the city of Norman has a vested interest in protecting its water supply. So.
If I'm, I may jump in here, although Moore doesn't have a WQPZ ordinance, that's just really a Norman thing, I think. Um, they do have to follow the requirements, requirements of the Lake Thunderbird TMDL. Um, and so we've partnered with Moore and the city of Oklahoma City, uh, because both of those cities do drain, uh, eventually into Lake Thunderbird. And so they do have to have some requirements in place to address those concerns and issues.
Yeah, I agree on the stormwater runoff.
I'm seeing no other council comments there.
All right, now is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments?
I'm seeing none.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Beerman?
So I just want to make sure that I'm completely clear about what's happening here. You know, the annex, if it's not, I can't plot it unless it has services. Can't get services because it's not feasible to do so in a term or the medium term. So we're looking at here, this property that they can't buy them soon, but they can't do anything else with it until they de-annex. And it also seems like from the staff report that the WQPZ is not even applicable to this property because the certificate of survey was done prior to the WQPZ. Is that correct?
The certificate of survey did go through prior to the adoption of the WQPZ, so it's not implicated as far as developing it based on that certificate of survey.
Okay, so there's no question about skirting the WQPZ because it wouldn't be applicable on this property, even if it did have utilities and was able to be platted. on this property, even if it did have utilities and was able to be platted immediately?
Right, based on the certificate of survey, if that's the development mechanism, correct?
Okay. Then at this point, I mean, I, I, I understand the substantive concerns that were brought up with this, but at this point, I feel like not allowing this and saying that they have to come, you know, that we'll consider it when they come forward with something that they want to do, just feels like an unnecessary step, since they couldn't even do it anyway, because they don't have services. Because we can't just deannex a piece of property in the middle of Norman because of all the requirements to apply for deannexation, to me, I'm, I'm feeling okay with supporting this, although I do, I do understand the concerns, and I think it's important to air them before a vote.
Councilmember Nash.
All right, so do they have a trash service?
Well, I, down there within the city limits of Norman, being agricultural, I don't have trash, the industrial part I can't speak.
If I could just jump in, you know, to the extent that there's concern regarding the standard and what should be considered, as City Attorney Walker had mentioned, there is a very specific statutory structure in place, and the items that are most implicated by that, that are set forth here and there in the staff report, are first, you know, is it platted, which this is not, certificate of, of survey is not recognized as plating on state level. And then second, its location, is it on the boundaries, the outskirts of the municipal boundary? Beyond that, has the city invested in infrastructure, which in this case, I was able to confirm departmentally, has not been done. And then beyond that, will that infrastructure, or will the utilities be extended to that area in the foreseeable future? And you saw the Utilities Authority comment that it was not a present plan. Those are the, the topics that are most often addressed when these cases are reviewed as well by a court.
Okay, this would not be the only piece of property that doesn't have water and sanitation service.
I might let the Utilities Authority weigh in on that in particular, but in a general sense, no, this would very likely not be the only property, not served by the infrastructure itself.
Yeah, this is absolutely not the only property that doesn't have water or sewer.
But if I might, it's going to be one of the few properties that is almost completely surrounded by another municipality. And that's the situation. That's, that's what's unique, I believe.
Thank you.
I'm seeing no other comments, Mayor.
All right. The motion on the floor is to reject the ordinance, excuse me, I think I, sorry. The motion on the floor is to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
And the motion is to adopt. Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Petron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Petron and Councilmember Nash.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Petron?
No.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Petron, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. Item 31, ordinance 2021-6 upon second and final reading, creating the position of municipal auditor to be appointed and removed by the city council. This was an item postponed from August 11, 2020, and was also discussed at our retreat. I'll entertain a motion to reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Council discussed waiting until the Charter Review Commission finished their review and to move the items forward together. As a result, item will not be considered at this time. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Are there any, excuse me, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Are there any public comments at this time? Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
The motion on the floor is to reject the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rolls?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, and the ordinance is rejected.
Thank you. Item 32, ordinance 2021-7 upon second and final reading, authorizing a special election on November 3, 2020, for the purpose of approving or rejecting ordinance 2021-6, creating the position of municipal auditor to be appointed and removed by the city council. This is another item postponed from August 11, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
No final comments.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to reject the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Petron?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The vote was unanimous, and the ordinance is hereby rejected.
Thank you. Item 33 is now moot and will not be considered. On to item 34, miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council only. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole, and limited to three minutes or less. And as a reminder, we cannot answer questions in miscellaneous discussion. Are there any comments?
We have one public comment, just a moment. No, she went home. Okay, you go ahead and identify yourself.
Mark Campbell, Ward 6. I wanted to talk to you all tonight about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. It's a psychological scale, and it's something that I want you to look into. It's a pyramid, and the bottom of the pyramid is a big, huge base, just like a regular pyramid. It's the structural base. And at the bottom are physiological needs, like air, water, food, shelter, sleep, and clothing. This is what council needs to be focusing on during a pandemic. At the top of the pyramid is self-actualization, the desire to become the most that one can be. This includes things like art and tourism. It's very tiny. Few people make it there. A lot of your friends are there. They're on a lot of the committees. This is not what you need to be focusing on during the pandemic with CARES Act funding. So again, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, look it up. Council spends, in my opinion, a lot of time coddling those at the top of the hierarchy. They are already on the committee to look out for each other committee. Art and tourism are boom and bust. You better have a side hustle. And those at the top, at the start of a pandemic, better be leading the band. Art and tourism are absolutely not high priority pandemic concerns. Travel was the first industry impacted. Come on. Now we'll change a beat here. Businesses who thrive on football, alcohol, I-35, and haven't put back in times of largesse, please don't get too suckered in by the loud and the greedy. Instead, focus on the proud and the needy, the startups, the ones who had difficulty applying, who don't have ends with city leaders. Just because a company made a boatload last year and didn't save is not good enough reason to fund them. That's poor business practices, and too bad, so sad. Some of you have more natural barometers of true compassion. Listen to those leaders. Now, just because a council member is one's friend, or a certain sex, or income bracket, does not mean he or she is above reproach, lambasting, lampooning, or criticizing, just like all public elected officials are. You don't get the fawning adulation without the incisive detraction. And if you get it from me, you have really earned it. To change a beat, I want to say, watching from home, I can figure out who one ward member is, Lee Hall. Can we get together on nomenclature for Zoom? Because we want to encourage younger people to know what's going on with the government. Also, Mayor Clark, thank you. Happy Halloween.
There's no more public comment.
All right, this is an opportunity for council to make comments and announcements. Let's start with Ward 1.
I don't have too much tonight. I'm truly going to leave you with one thing, which is wear your mask. That's it. The one thing. And vote, vote, if you haven't already. Vote between now and Tuesday, and then wear your mask every time you go out for the foreseeable future. It's not going to end anytime soon. Your mask doesn't protect you. It never has. It is to protect other people. That's all I've got.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, we had a really good Ward 2 meeting on Monday night. Surprising number of people showed up for it. And, but because of the inclement weather that was coming in that night, we'll have another one. We'll look at the calendar. I'll visit with the city manager, maybe in another week, where we can discuss our city, city goals in public, and maybe also go over the charter review. That was something that was brought up in that meeting, so that was very good. And then, just a cool fact, for those of you that love wildlife, like I do, there's about 500 whooping cranes left in the world, and two of them were sighted last week at Lake Thunderbird. And so, whooping cranes, I think the cold weather probably pushed them on south, so they're not out there anymore. But it's a, it's a very, it's a species that was down to about 100, and they reproduce about two eggs a year and usually get about a 50% half rate. So they're hard, hard to breed, but it's a success story, and, and we're part of the, we're part of the answer. And if we end up with a South Canadian River park, maybe we can have whooping crane migrations and ecotourism. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Petron?
Well, I'd like to take a moment to thank staff for their relentless, hard work during this ice storm. And take a moment to recognize all of the grieving families out here that are scared about what this ice storm has brought their families and, and their properties. And at the same time, I think that it's reminded us that we are a community, and it's super important to check in on our vulnerable neighbors, the elderly, the disabled, the single parents. Just really wanted to say how appreciative I am, because the city manager has been in contact with us quite a bit, keeping us up to date on the investigation of what they're doing, and meeting with contractors. And I don't think there's been any sleep that's had, been had. But, and I know that we're going to continue working, get the city cleaned back up, and get some new trees planted. And so, yeah, I just want to say thank you about that. And I agree, everybody get out and vote with your mask on, get a flu shot, check on your neighbors. That's it. Not long-winded tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Petron, I do want to say thank you for recognizing those efforts. I got to say that Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Judd Foster, Mr. Scott Sturts, Mr. Jason Olson, Mr. Chris Mattingly, those, those staff members coordinating the response to this ice storm, there are things we do very, very well here in Norman, and responding to these issues is, is one of those things. I am grateful that we have the staff here that has the experience already under their belt to allow us to spring into action and move just as swiftly as, as the market will allow us to move. So we'll continue to keep council informed, and you may have some agenda items coming up here shortly, to allow us the, the final implementation. When the cleanup schedule is put together, council will be the first to know, but we will keep you posted. But really, hats off to all of the city staff members who have been working feverishly in making sure the streets are cleared, and that we'll be able to execute a robust cleanup program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so glad you chimed in and let everybody know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, city manager, and Councilmember Petron. Councilmember Hall?
Yes, I also want to thank our city staff, their responses, the city manager just said, to really extreme events like this is where they really shine, and are on call 24/7, trying to respond to the needs of all of our residents. And that does not go unnoticed by all of us, and by so many residents are so appreciative. I also want to say thank you to all of the workers that we have coming in from out of state to help us. Had a long conversation today with a man from Kentucky who was working on the power grid in our neighborhood, and just really appreciate that we have neighbors near and far that are willing to drop what they're doing in their own states and their own communities to come to Norman and help us when we need help. So we are all neighbors, all of us, and there are some of us who are able to help, and there are many of us who need help. So this is a time when we can come together as a community with a common goal of taking care of one another and doing all the things that we can to help one another get through this. There are a lot of people that feel very alone during a time like this, because everything that they're used to and how they communicate is completely cut off. And so this is when knowing your neighbors and reaching out to neighbors that you don't know is really, really important. And I've already seen so many acts of kindness take place in Norman, and how appreciative I am of, of those who are in a position to help, because there are many, many that need, need help. So a few things that I did want to mention- So a few things that I did want to mention because one of the things I've learned through these extreme weather events this year is that people are really hungry for information and for any kind of detail that we can provide. And so a few of the things that I've mentioned today on my Facebook page and in my Word pages, I think may be of interest to everyone else, and this is a good opportunity to get that message out there. One of the things that I think we're feeling very frustrated about is so many that are still not have power. When I checked last, we still had about ten thousand residents in Norman without power. And one of the things that has changed today is that OG&E has provided a walk-up station at Sooner Mall in the parking lot. So it's at the southeast corner of Dillard's outside in the parking lot. Not certain of the hours when we know those, we'll get that out to you, but for those who are trying to find answers and can't sit on the phone for two hours to talk to somebody at OG&E because you don't have enough battery power to last that long, that's another option. Please wear your mask if you go. We've already talked about the work that's being underdone right now for pickup, which my understanding is will begin next week. And there's a little bit of a delay there because of weather conditions and the kind of equipment that's going to be coming in, so that's one of the reasons why, you know, it may be a few days before you start being, seeing pickup, but there's going to be a schedule put out, as the city manager mentioned, there'll be more than one pass, so I think be assured that we will get to you as soon as we possibly can. The other thing that I'm really grateful for is all of the people who have offered to volunteer to help. We have a lot of people in our community who are not able to those limbs or have the equipment to take care of getting that stuff to the side of the road. And there have been many, many people, including organizations that owe you and faith-based organizations who are stepping up to volunteer and the United Way of Norman helping coordinate those volunteer efforts. So I think in the coming days, we'll be getting more details on how you can help. And so if you need help, how to request help. And I know the city manager is already forwarding a lot of those requests. So I, I appreciate all of the efforts on the part of all of us to try to come together as a community to get through this. Just when you think twenty twenty can't get any worse, wow, we've all got really hit hard this week with all of that. And the other thing that's already been mentioned, early voting is underway at the Cleveland County Fairgrounds. They'll be open tomorrow and also for limited hours from nine to two on Saturday. Wear a mask. It takes a little bit of patience, but they're very organized and move you through as rapidly as possible. So if you haven't had an opportunity to vote yet, you can take advantage of that or of course vote on November third, next, next Tuesday. So with that, take care of one another and appreciate everyone in the community trying to reach out and help a neighbor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nash?
I will jump, if you don't mind, Mayor, jump in right quick before we move on. That walk-up center that OG&E has established at Sooner Mall, the hours are eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
Oh. I'm excited about whooping cranes. I'm a bird lover. I got a question about is the big trash day, is it for Friday service, it's going to be the Saturdays, that impacted at all with the debris cleanup?
No, we're, we're still on schedule to get that done. The loads have been bigger than we expected, so we've been finishing up the Mondays and Tuesdays after that Saturday. So some people aren't getting it picked up on a Saturday, but we will follow up until it's done on the Monday, Tuesday following.
Okay. Fantastic. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. There have been a lot of questions about that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Foreman?
Just to touch on the early voting also, I've had friends of mine that have spent an hour and a half trying to vote, and then a friend who's a teacher for Norman, she waited two and a half hours, so I'm very inspired by everyone going out to vote. I have to cross Robinson in that area, and it was very annoying today, but it was very positive, annoying that there were so many people stopped to try and turn in. But on that same vein, in my neighborhood, there are neighbors with very different political signs out, but one of my neighbors has the chainsaw and went around and took care of everyone's trees. So I'm really inspired by, no matter what our differences are, that we recognize that we're all sort of in this together as a community. So, you know, it's just been a heck of a week, and so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ride that positivity wave through the weekend. And just in case people haven't seen, the study session next week is canceled, so we won't be having a meeting. So, okay.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Also just want to extend a thanks to our city staff and all the people out there helping us recover from this storm event. The line people that are out there trying to get our services back. I know a lot of folks are frustrated and we're so reliant on power and internet that, you know, it's extremely inconvenient and uncomfortable and could be dangerous sometimes too, to be without those services for very long. But this type of damage that we've seen, it definitely is taking a while. Most of Ward seven, from what I can tell based on the outage map, has power, especially the southern and central parts of Ward seven, but as you go further north towards campus, you see more power outages still going on, including where I live. My house is still out. So I know everyone is working extremely hard and as quickly as they can to get everything fixed and back on, but it's just taking time. So I just encourage everybody to be as patient as possible. And they'll get it done. I do want to take a moment to recognize the person Councilmember Bierman mentioned earlier, John Braley, teacher, father, friend, passed away last night due to complications from COVID nineteen. I in just in Ward seven, I know of more than a handful of residents that I have lost to COVID nineteen since this started, that I know personally. Some of which I've known for years and, and gotten to know just because of my service on city council. And so it really is hitting home for all of us. This is real. It's having deadly impacts on people that we care about in our community. And so we need to take it seriously, and we need to do everything we can to slow this down and stop it. So in my opinion, one, one life is too many to lose. And John is only one year older than me, so people think it can't hurt you because you're younger or whatnot. We're, we're both under forty, so I just want to make that clear and, and let his family know that we're all thinking of him and them during this time, so. Outside of that, I just want to encourage people to get out and vote. I'm going to be voting on Election Day. I always do. I like to vote in person. My polling place always has a low turnout, even on presidential elections, and there'll probably be more this time. But I still always like to go vote in person so I can visit with my, the poll workers and, and things like that. I think it's very important. I'm excited to see so many people interested in getting out there this year. It's getting to vote. We, and we need to all take advantage of. So anyway, I will probably be working on having a word meeting in the few, next few weeks as well, letting some stuff calm down from the election and things like that, but maybe looking for maybe one of our last nice weather days in November where I can, we can meet up at Reeves Park like we did back in August and maybe just get an update on some stuff going on and kind of maybe informal distancing masks, those types of things. I'm also always available by phone or text. If you need to reach me about stuff like this. Our residents, when making these decisions, that's how I make these decisions. And if you, I encourage you all to reach out to me anytime if you ever have any comments or questions. I do keep a tally of Ward seven residents that contact me about agenda items. And it is important to me so that I can have the most feedback and make the best decisions possible. So anyway, thank you all. I look forward to our next meeting.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, this has been touched on several times tonight, but I'll just go ahead and reiterate for anybody in Ward eight that's watching. If you're physically unable to get your storm debris to the curb, please don't hesitate to message my Ward email, and I will do my best to connect you with all the amazing volunteers that have been alluded to tonight, and we'll figure out a plan to get you taken care of. So best of luck to everybody.
Thank you. Well, you guys all covered so many great announcements. I, I don't have all that much to add. Vote, obviously, lots of options to do that. Wear a mask for obvious reasons. Science, friends. I think some of us knew people who died from COVID nineteen right at the beginning. But now I know so many people that have had it. And as the numbers of casualties from COVID nineteen rise in Norman, we're all going to be connected to someone that will lose because some people wouldn't wear a mask. We can't control that it's here, but we can control our own actions. And I would ask, like all of our, your councilmembers, please wear a mask. Solinda Richardson Martin, one of my favorite librarians. Well, all librarians are my favorite. But one of my first positions with the city of Norman was the library board. We've lost her. It will probably get better before it gets worse, but again, wear a mask, get a flu shot, wash your hands. Halloween is on a Saturday, yet another piece of bitterness of twenty twenty. As a mom to kids who trick or treat, it's always brutal to have to get them up for school the next day. But I'm guessing there will be parties. Make good choices. There is a pandemic going on. And if you're taking your kids trick or treating, make sure they have a mask along with whatever fun mask they have. Make sure they can breathe. Stay away from people not in your bubble. Use common sense. If you're handing out candy, please do it in a safe way. I know life has to go on. Twenty twenty is getting pretty rough, and I think we all need to do what we can to keep not just you safe and healthy, but your neighbors safe and healthy. And I agree, these last few days of watching neighbors help each other has been refreshing. Let's not have it end once the tree limbs are gone. Let's keep it going. Twenty twenty is not over yet. I also want to remember Harold Hyple. We all know him. He's been around for quite some time, and he is no longer with us. He will be missed. He contributed to the city of Norman till the very end, I'm pretty sure. And I will always remember him for his dedication to the city and leaving it better than he found it. So many sad announcements, but life goes on. Make good choices, wear a mask, vote. Enjoy the break from city council. I promise you, we don't get breaks. We may not be right here on Zoom, but we are continuing to working hard facing the many issues that Norman is dealing with right now. Stay tuned for updates on recommended arborists and when the tree limb pickup will be. More information on that coming. And the Norman Police Department shared great information on their social media about identifying potential frauds after natural disasters like this. So I encourage you to review that. Be safe, everyone. Be kind.